To order the city council meeting for the city of Highland Park, Illinois, August 11th, 2025, will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Center.
Present.
Councilmember Bruckman, here. Councilmember Ross.
Here.
Councilmember Tapia.
Present.
Councilmember Littler.
Here.
Councilmember Bloomberg.
Here.
Mayor Roderick.
Here. We have quorum.
Everyone, please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
May I have a motion to approve the minutes of the regular city council meeting held July 14th, 2025, the minutes of the closed session of the regular city council meeting held on, since July 16th, but I think we mentioned July 14th, 2025?
On June 16th.
And June 16th, 2025.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Those minutes are approved. May I have a motion to approve the warrant list?
So moved.
Second.
Any comments or questions on the warrant list? Hearing none, will the clerk please call the vote?
Councilmember Center.
Aye.
Councilmember Bruckman.
Aye.
Councilmember Ross.
Aye.
Councilmember Tapia.
Aye.
Councilmember Littler.
Aye.
Councilmember Bloomberg.
Aye.
Mayor Roderick.
Aye. That's seven ayes, no nays, and the warrant list is approved. Will now move to the report of the mayor. After 674 days, we continue to remember the innocent people who are being held hostage in Gaza since October 7th of 2023. We continue to share our support with their loved ones throughout the world, especially those here in Highland Park. I have one appointment this evening, which is filling a vacancy on the zoning board of appeals. The volunteers who serve on one of the city's 18 advisory groups, boards, and commissions are dedicated representatives of our community and provide vital insight on policy matters presented to their respective groups. I'm seeking council consensus to appoint Jeffrey Aronoff for a term beginning September 15th, 2025 through December 31st, 2028. Although this council previously supported Mr. Aronoff's appointment, I'm seeking your concurrence this evening in adjusting the start of his term due to prearranged scheduling conflicts. Do I have your concurrence?
Yes.
Wonderful. And again, thank you, Mr. Aronoff, for serving on the zoning board of appeals. We have no proclamations this evening. One of my favorite things is the presentation of the Len Kobe Award by the Downtown Highland Park Property Owners Association. Hello, Mitchell Kobe. Good to see you in the front row. We grew up on Lakeside Place together. The Downtown Highland Park Property Owners Association was formed in 2007 for the long-term health of the downtown district. Property owner Al Clermont joins us this evening to provide information about the Len Kobe Award and to present the 2025 award winners.
Well, what makes Highland Park so unique and great? It's our schools, ravines, our waterfront, and our downtown. I'm Al Clermont, a founding director of the Downtown Highland Park Property Owners Association, which was formed in 2007 in order for downtown property owners to formally come together as the watchdogs for the long-term health of our downtown district. I'm joined today with P.O.A. Wilson and Eric Spitzer. Prior to the formation of this group, we were often called to attend property owner meetings with the Chamber of Commerce Director and, when willing, our mayor or a councilman. We were called together by Len Kobe, a fellow property owner and longtime owner of Kobe's men's clothing shop. Together, we discussed what we could do to make our downtown better. Len Kobe was adored by his fellowship of property owners, and once we formed our official group, it was Len Kobe who has given the honor to petition for us property owners to fund a special service area to raise $300,000 per year for property owners for the marketing of our fabulous downtown. We were successful in this endeavor and have since contributed millions of dollars to promote our downtown. In 2009, the Property Owners Association formed the Len Kobe Award to be given annually or is deserved to individuals or organizations who prominently stand out in improving our downtown. The inaugural recipient of the Len Kobe Award was Len Kobe himself. Our 2025 Len Kobe Awards go to two deserving drivers of our downtown. Our first honoree is Mark Muller. The salvation of our changing downtown revolves around our ability to put feet on the street. Mark is an architect who has designed, built, leased, and sold incredibly gorgeous dwelling units surrounding our downtown. In 2001, we were very fortunate to have Mark move to Highland Park. In 2002, Mark was designing and building houses in northwest suburban Lake County. In 2005, the Laurel Court Row Homes came with 15 townhomes. It was the first project in Highland Park with inclusionary housing. It's a three-year project. It took three years. It turned a profit. Next came the Laurel Apartments, getting bigger, 52 units in Laurel Residences. Then One Highland Park on Orchard, 20 larger condos. And then the Park Sheridan. Isn't that a beauty? 20 units, there's some 22-foot ceilings. You ask me, the place is a masterpiece. And further, the buyers of these units put in lots of their own dollars for improvements. It's quite a place. You think Mark is through? No. Coming soon, the Walbright at Oakwood and LaSalle. The Walton on Second Street is coming, and trust me, more will come. Each development is first-class and designed to blend into the community. You'll see high ceilings and fitness rooms, party rooms, a golf simulator, dog areas. Everything's gorgeous. And then Mark figures out how to add corner units into his projects, not just four on a floor, but many. He works with his 10 employees in his Port Clinton offices. His contributions aren't limited to the private sector. He's volunteered big time to the public sector. He served on the zoning board of appeals for 11 years and the Community Partners for Affordable Housing Advisory Board 12 years to present. Mitch Kobe has an award that he wants to hand to Mark, and how about a round of applause for Mark Muller?
Thank you for this recognition. I'm honored to accept this award from the Downtown Property Owners Association. Downtown Highland Park is a truly special place, and over the past two decades, I've been grateful to contribute to its growth with several multifamily projects. Each project has been guided by a simple principle: to create high-quality buildings designed to bring people together so they can enjoy and support a vibrant, walkable downtown. This recognition is not just about buildings, it's about people, our partners, city officials, planners, community members, as well as our own dedicated team who play a big role to make each project happen. We share a vision of a stronger and vibrant downtown, so let's keep improving, investing, and building a downtown that reflects the best of Highland Park. Thank you.
Pretty good. All right, well, I'm in the neighborhood, but congratulations.
Well, we have another very deserving recipient of the Len Kobe Award. It's the Port Clinton Art Festival. In 1984, Amy Amder worked as a gopher for Steven Amder Realty. She had an idea for an art show in Port Clinton Plaza. She pulled it off. She curated a show for 40 artists. She ran the show with no staff, but with the help of her mother, Barbara. Always the last weekend in August, the festival is improved every year. Highland Park residents supported the artists and earned a reputation of being buyers. Artists hungry to sell their art started coming from farther away to the Highland Park show. Well, Amy pioneered a different style of management, and that was putting artists first. She gave awards, served breakfast to the artists, and offered onsite assistance. She started a boot camp for her artists 20 years ago. She works in cooperation with the Art Center, offering free seminars to area artists. In year 10 of the Port Clinton Art Festival, she started the youth art division. Sunshine artists rate shows nationally. Port Clinton has been in the top 10 for 30 years and, many times, number one in the country. Amy currently runs 26 shows a year. She's very busy in the summer. Highland Park has their best show because of the highest quality of curated artists. This year, 200 artists were chosen from over 500 applicants. Highland Park is very personal and fulfilling for Amy. She has 10 full-time staff members, and at the Port Clinton show, there's going to be 25 staff members circulating. Admission is free. Over 5,000 people per day see gorgeous downtown Highland Park while coming to the Port Clinton Art Festival. The festival is a tremendous ambassador for Highland Park and has a great economic impact for Highland Park and downtown Highland Park. The stories, Amy could write a book with unique tales of production, staff, artists, situations, and recognition. Amy, thank you. We have an award for you. Mitch Kobe, how about some applause for?
Thank you all so much. I really appreciate that standing ovation. It makes getting up at 4 o'clock in the morning all these years worth it. And I want to thank, there's so many people to thank. Thanks to the city, to the city council, to the mayor over these past, going on five decades now, and to the Chamber of Commerce, who has been a pleasure to work with, to the residents, to the store owners, to the property owners. You've all been there. And I want to thank my staff, who works hard and helps me make the vision real. I hope that the art festival has touched everybody in a positive way, and it's my hope that it's added to the cultural life of Highland Park. Born and raised here, it's very personal to me, and I really appreciate this honor. Thank you so much.
Last word is to thank the mayor and the council for this venue to show our appreciation for these wonderful downtown Highland Park ambassadors. Thank you.
Thank you, Al Clermont. Thank you very much, and congratulations to Mark and to Amy and to your teams. Highland Park truly benefits from your continued investment and your engagement in our community. We would be remiss if we didn't also encourage everyone, don't miss the Port Clinton Art Festival, bringing in 200-plus outstanding artists, fun activities, and live performances August 23rd and 24th. That's coming up soon, so see you there. Thank you. That is it for the report of the mayor. Is there any business from the council? Seeing none, we'll continue on to business from city staff. City manager Newkirk, if you could please provide the staff report.
Great, thank you, Mayor. Just a few reports. First, we have 19 items on the omnibus agenda. Each item includes a detailed staff report. All are recommended for approval. I just want to highlight a few of them. Item number one pertains to committee of the whole and city council meetings for calendar year 2026. We are recommending that we continue to meet at 5:30 for committee of the whole and then 7:30 for city council. On those consolidated meeting months, when we only have one meeting, we're recommending that we start at 5 o'clock, just as we did this evening. And then we will include all those dates subject to approval on the city's website and continue to communicate via the e-news in advance of meetings. Item number four is an amendment to multiple chapters of the city code. This is a follow-up to the May 16th planning and budget workshop that we had with the city council, where we received feedback on a number of these topics, and we are recommending that the ordinance take effect upon passage approval and publication, which would allow us to communicate to impacted businesses and individuals in advance of the 2026 fiscal and calendar year. Item number seven is an ordinance adopting the International Holocaust Remembrance Alliance Working Definition of Anti-Semitism. We will include the IHRA working definition into the city employment manual under prohibited acts of discrimination by city employees and contractors. We'll also communicate to businesses as well as to the general public about the approval, subject to, of course, your approval this evening. We did discuss this topic at the committee of the whole meeting, so anyone watching from the public can listen to the council dialogue. Earlier this afternoon, we did recommend an amendment to the ordinance that was emailed to the city council. There are two proposed changes, so the ordinance is recommended to be approved as amendment. The first change is to the second whereas clause. This was recommended by Mayor Roderick. And then the second change is to section two of the ordinance, and this was recommended changes by council member Littler. And then just special thanks, council member Littler, as well as Mayor Roderick, our corporation council and assistant manager Emily Taub for working on this initiative. Want to just highlight, item number eight is the intergovernmental agreement with the Illinois Department of Transportation to use ITEP grant funds for costs associated with the tree removal for the Sheridan Road project. We do have a staff report if the council is interested when this item is on for formal consideration, but briefly, this is a public safety project that has been discussed for more than 10 years. We received formal approval from the council in July 2016. That's when we had our first formal open house. It's been discussed with the city council each year thereafter, and we've had neighborhood meetings. There's a detailed staff report. So the agreement basically allows IDOT to include our sidewalk project as part of their project, and this is specific to the tree removal. And then finally, items 15, 16, and 17 pertain to the proposed 22-unit, three-story townhome development at Green Bay Road and Glenview Avenue. There's a detailed staff report, again, summarizing the plan and design commission, city council consideration. The recommendations from the June 16th city council meeting are highlighted in the staff report, and earlier today, we sent a recommendation to approve item number 16 as amended. That pertains to adding two additional windows on the facade facing Green Bay Road. So again, that would be item number 16 as amended for your consideration. Next, included in the staff report is an update on major projects for the second quarter. So Erin, if we could go to that next slide. So we have 140 major projects that we are managing and working through this year. A major project is considered a major initiative that is outside the city's day-to-day operation. This work plan, which can be found at the website noted on the screen there, includes detailed information about each major project, as well as the staff lead and an update on each initiative. And each of these projects does align with one of the city's major core priorities, and we added vibrancy, which really takes into effect 2026, but of course, we are vibrant and we strive to be, so we added vibrancy as one of the core priorities. And then if we go to the next slide, Erin. So 25% of the major projects on the work plan are marked as complete or ongoing as of this update, and then when individuals go to the work plan, you can see a little bit more detailed information, as shown here on the screen, about each individual project and the progress that we are at with each one. And then finally, want to just give an update on the possible dissolution of the South Lake mosquito abatement district. So very briefly, for those who are not familiar with this district, this is a separate taxing district from the city. It serves five communities, Bannockburn, Deerfield, Highland Park, Highwood, and Riverwoods. And this taxing district basically acquires taxing funds that are used for then mosquito abatement and prevention education. The district does not have any staff, but they primarily use those funds to contract with a company, Clark Mosquito Abatement, who does all the work on their behalf. We do receive questions and calls from residents as it pertains to mosquito abatement and spraying and procedures and so forth. spraying and procedures and so forth. And so we, as a city staff, just coordinate with Clark on any of those questions and treatments. Lake County has, the finance committee has held two meetings as of recently, and this pertains to the proposed or possible dissolution of that district. So the most recent one was held on August 7th, and the one prior to that was on July 31st. At that most recent meeting, the finance committee did support an ordinance to dissolve the district. And by doing so, that basically triggered a formal audit to be conducted of that taxing district. The belief is that there's economies of scale and efficiencies to be gained by dissolution of this district. And if communities are interested then of pursuing mosquito abatement services, they would do so on their own or pursue other measures. And so that audit formally, legally, is required to take place within 30 days upon approval by the Lake County ordinance. So that audit schedule is underway. We're going to stay in communication with Lake County as it pertains to this process and certainly keep the mayor and council apprised. And then just to let you know kind of what we're doing at this time. So we are reviewing the district's financials as well, and just getting a better understanding of their budget, their expenses, and specifically what services are provided to our community. We are meeting with those four other communities that are currently served by the district just to understand their short and long-term goals as well pertaining to this topic. And then we're, we will take a look at options that may be available to us as a community, as well as associated costs and services. So for example, there is another mosquito abatement district, the North Shore, that serves more communities in our immediate area. And so we will talk to them about the services that they provide and the associated costs. And then we'll also evaluate either, if the dissolution does take place, what it would cost for independently, if we were to pursue those services on our own, or possibly looking at a new intergovernmental agreement with communities in our immediate area. So we will put together a report and recommendation, schedule it at a future committee of the whole meeting for your formal consideration at that time.
So I'm just going to chime in and say, obviously, we want to make sure we're keeping the community safe from mosquitoes, mosquito-borne illnesses. Want to have a better understanding, and I'm hoping that this comes from the audit, but I guess my question is also internally, are we looking at what is the added cost to Highland Park if we don't have the economies of scale that come from working together with these other communities? And then lastly, I just want to share with the council, my understanding is, if the county moves ahead with this and we choose to fight back, it's a referendum process to then say, no, you cannot dissolve this district? Or is it that we then have to build a new district? And maybe that's a question for Corporation Council.
Mayor, if you could correct, is the statute under which this dissolution is being vetted by the county, does have a backdoor referendum process by which the dissolution could be stopped? It would be, it would not be really at the city level, per se, it would be the voters that could address that. So it's a matter of determining whether or not that's something that enough voters will pursue. There's a petition process, there's a court oversight through that referendum process.
But that cannot be the city that does that referendum.
That's correct.
Organizes it, it has to be voters.
That's correct, mayor.
Okay. Councilmember Tapia?
Well, related, I mean philosophically, I think there's too many jurisdictions in the state of Illinois. So streamlining it sounds very attractive, and it seems to be a good case for it at some level. But I am concerned about who's going to pay for it. And also, the, you know, if this is a tax, taxing body and they go away, then is there, what happens to that tax? Who, is there taxes?
Right. They have a reserve of over $1 million.
And is Lake County offering to fund it? Or would they tax us for that? I mean, what's the premise?
They're not offering to fund it. So other communities, for example, the village of Lake Bluff, they're not part of a district, and they fund it themselves. So as a city, that's why we'll look at various options that are available to us. But it would be a cost that we would then have to incur, whether we're, you know, part of another district that we pay into that district, or we do it ourselves. But those funds, and again, we've done some research, you know, those funds, in one case, go to the school district by statute. So that's one scenario.
But from a revenue, but from a revenue perspective, what are our options? Could we end up actually taxing our own residents for it?
We could. So for example, I mean, the district overall levy's about a half million dollars. And so for example, if we find out that it's going to cost us, I'm just making this up because I don't even know, $100,000. Then yes, we could take that $100,000 and figure out for our tax levy what that would cost to generate that additional $100,000. So from a public perspective, it may be a net zero, but at least it gives us revenue because right now, we're not paying anything for mosquito abatement district. So that's one thing that we will learn as part of that audit process, is to understand how much is truly being generated from Highland Park taxpayers, and then how much would it cost if we were to do it on our own?
So when you say we are not paying, we, the city of Highland Park is not, but the city's taxpayers are still paying. Councilmember Littler?
So I completely concur with the idea of having an audit on this. I really appreciate that fact. And while I completely support getting rid of as many extra bodies as we can, this is a really specific instance. The people on this board are probably the most highly educated, best-prepared people, and it's been that way for the entire duration of this board's existence. And they don't receive a salary. This is totally on a volunteer basis. We also happen to be fortunate enough to be, have a resource within, almost in our community, that's the provider of these services. And they work especially closely with this board because of the expertise, because they're just not a provider of services. They happen to understand the science behind this abatement. So it would, I really want to see the numbers on this, because as it works right now, other than paying for the actual treatments, these people aren't making any money, and they are making the best educated decisions for five towns, which to me is an economy of scales two. If anything, I might be interested in seeing if they couldn't expand so that it would still be an economy of scale in the opposite way. So again, I'm totally open. I want to hear what they have to say. But in defense of the abatement board, they have been amazing in their performance to our communities.
Agreed. Agreed. Councilmember Center?
Just a point of clarification. We don't have any control over how this continues, correct? Like, we can only react and utilize the information that we learn from the ultimate audit and continued discussions to determine how we best ensure safety and ongoing, the ongoing carryout of these services for our residents. Is that accurate? Or do we have any influence on how this ultimately goes?
I'll start with a legal answer, and manager Newkirk may have some practical insight based on her discussions with other officials. Legally, formally, councilmember center, you're right, we have no official role. There is language in the county's code that gives Lake County the unilateral authority, in this case, to dissolve the district in their county board's discretion, subject only to the backdoor referendum that we talked about a few moments ago. As it relates to the process, and maybe may help to touch on some of the questions in the council today. The first ordinance that's referenced on the screen that was adopted on August 7th, the audit is a required statutory step after that. The county has to engage in that audit, excuse me, and then those results are reported to the county board. The county board can then, if it chooses to adopt a second ordinance that would authorize dissolution of the district. At that point, the county would have to publish a notice that they've done so. And then there is a 30-day period in which the residents of the Southlake mosquito abatement district could file a petition to prevent the dissolution. Obviously, if they do file that petition, there'd be a vote at an upcoming election. If not, then the county would proceed, working with the court, for appointment of what's called a trustee in dissolution. And that individual would be someone whose job would be to essentially wind up the affairs of the district. I think this may have been part of councilmember Tapia's question. The money that is currently in the district's coffers would be used, first, to satisfy any remaining liabilities or debts that the district may have. If they own any property, and I don't know if the district does, I don't think so, but that property would be sold, any excess money is paid to the county into a special fund for the county to, according to the statute, you know, perform the duties of the dissolved district. But they don't necessarily take on the obligation to do mosquito abatement, you know, for here on and after. It really is a dissolution. Once that dissolution is complete, as manager stated, it really becomes up to each of the individual communities that comprise the district, whether and to what extent they want to pursue mosquito abatement on their own.
And if I could just add one additional point. So operationally, we have been asked to provide a letter of support for the dissolution. We are the largest community within this district, and so I think the voice of this elected body will speak volumes to the Lake County Board. What we have communicated, and I've been in, you know, regular communication with the mayor, of course, what we've communicated is, we just need to do our due diligence at this point. We're not in a position right now to really indicate, are there efficiencies to be gained? How much would it cost us? What would it look like? So we can best serve our community. So we have not provided that notification. The Lake County Finance Committee has heard from two district board members who are Highland Park residents for the support of the dissolution. So as current board members, what they have indicated is there's efficiencies to be gained. And so they believe that that board would be best if it were dissolved and managed by each individual municipality.
Just a quick follow-up question. So as we await information in order for us to be educated enough to then make a decision, are we effectively running a parallel path to determine what it looks like in a world where this is dissolved, and to understand the cost so that we could have that discussion?
Yes.
Absolutely. So we know both scenarios. Councilmember Bloomberg?
Thank you. The only thing I would add to that, and I have read, as we all have, some communications from those two board members. I've also communicated with our county trustee, Paul Frank, who also supports the dissolution. And one of the issues is the equities with which money is raised and then used in various communities. We all have disparate mosquito abatement needs, depending on the nature of our grounds and our community. But money is not necessarily gathered in an equitable proportion to the needs. Additionally, I appreciate the comments about the expertise of the mosquito abatement district members. That expertise runs more towards the job of mosquito abatement and understanding the environmental issues, the health issues that are associated with that, but not necessarily the management of the funds or of the district itself. And it's not that I have any complaints about them in particular, but it is not, as I understand it, well-staffed. And there are issues that have occurred as a result of a lack of guidance and support that, as a city, we have demonstrated over time, we are good at. The expertise element that is present on that board certainly is something that we have people in our community, because we have people on the board who have that expertise, can provide that health and safety guidance to us in the event that it is dissolved and we have to take it over. So those are things that ought to be considered along the way as well.
Great. Thank you.
That concludes our report.
Great. Thank you. Thank you, city manager Newkirk. Management analyst Megan Cherry, will you please introduce the next item on our agenda, business from the public?
Thank you, mayor. The next item on the agenda is business from the public. This is an opportunity for members of the public to address the city council on a topic that is within the council's purview and jurisdiction, but is not listed in another location on the agenda. If you would like to speak about a matter that is listed on the agenda, we ask that you wait until that agenda item is called, and we will give you an opportunity to speak then. If your matter is on the omnibus or consent agenda, please let us know if you would like us to remove that matter from the consolidated list so you can speak about it. Please be aware that business from the public is not intended to be a forum for open dialogue or engagement with members of the city council. Rather, it is intended as an opportunity to make comments to the city council. Please do not expect a response from anyone tonight. If appropriate, questions may be directed to the city manager or other city staff. All comments should be directed to the city council. All speakers will be limited to three minutes. We request that speakers refrain from throwing objects or using noise makers, and that the public not applaud or make other comments after any speaker. We ask that everyone be respectful, civil, and non-repetitive.
Great. Thank you very much. Are there any comments from the public? Any members of the public wishing to be heard? An item not on tonight's agenda. Seeing none, we'll continue on with our scheduled business. Items 1 through 19 have been grouped together for omnibus consideration. I'll note that item 7 is as amended, and that item 16 is as amended. I know, councilmember Littler, you wanted to make a comment about item 7.
Thank you very much.
I would like to pull 8 and 16, please.
All right, hang on. So pull 8 and 16. Thank you. Okay.
So I would just like to comment on one resolution, which is on our consent agenda tonight. And even though it is going to be taken as a group, I think it's important that we recognize it. I'm going to comment tonight about the International Holocaust, the IRA definition of anti-Semitism. I want to thank my fellow council members, our staff, residents, and several Jewish organizations for their support in what I believe is true landmark legislation. Highland Park has always been steadfast in its commitment to preventing, identifying, and combating discrimination and harassment via hate and bigotry. While there are federal and state protections to which we obviously adhere, accepting the IRA definition of anti-Semitism with contemporary examples helps our staff and city identify and prevent anti-Semitic behavior and further protects our residents. Why in a city as tolerant and clearly committed to protecting its residents do we need to define anti-Semitism? And why now? The answer is painfully evident in the world, in our country, in Illinois, and even in Highland Park. For the first time since the United States has begun recording hate crimes, acts of anti-Semitism outpaced race. Anti-Semitic hate crimes not only surpassed those of race, but 68% of all hate crimes reported last year were anti-Semitic in nature. Today, this council is about to take the brave step of enacting an ordinance that adopts the International Holocaust Remembrance Alliance, IRA's definition of anti-Semitism, and an ordinance which further directs our city manager to ensure ongoing education and training to our staff, and publicity on our website, and materials, and not, that not only do we condemn all forms of discrimination, including anti-Semitism, but we can now identify such behavior in order to combat it and to teach others to do the same. I specifically want to acknowledge the efforts of the Anti-Defamation League, Stand With Us, the American Jewish Committee, and the Jewish Federation for their research, legal assistance, and support. Hate has no home in Highland Park, and today, we are strengthening that message.
Great. Thank you. And thank you, councilmember Littler, for bringing this to us during our council retreat when we were looking at our statement against hate and our statement of our values, and the fact that this has just had such a disproportionate impact on our community, on this region. So I'm delighted that we're moving forward with this. I do want to confirm with my council, before we take this action, and I don't know if I can do this, Corporation Council, but we talked at committee of the whole about how we wanted to bring our statement against hate and our value statement to the Human Relations Advisory Group, recognizing that other groups are dealing with discrimination and hate and intolerance, for them to do a full review, but recognizing the immediacy of the need right now to address anti-Semitism, we're moving forward with that this evening. So is that anything that we need to?
You don't need to take any formal action, mayor. I think I alluded to, I think we understood the direction for the committee of the whole, and I believe that's going to be set on the work agenda for the HRAG in the upcoming future.
Wonderful. Thank you. Councilmember Tapia, I know you wanted to say something, and councilwoman Bruckman?
Yeah, and I made similar comments in the committee of the whole, but just in this forum. As the only non-Jewish member of the city council, I just wanted to give my perspective. You know, there was an educational journey for me to really understand what was behind this, historically, semantically, and also socially, and in terms of protection. And, you know, I have several people to thank, you know, councilmember Littler and other people that are out here that were my teachers and educators in this. And, you know, a couple of questions that were kind of important to work through, at least for me, and based on my talking to other people, Jewish and non-Jewish, and even with the Jewish community, it wasn't like a consensus necessarily on all this. And some people tell me that shouldn't surprise you, that there would be differences in opinion. But in the end, for me, especially as someone who specializes in diversity, equity, inclusion, you know, the question is that had, that I felt had to be answered that many people raised is, why does this particular community have something additional? community have something additional proposed on top of the, you know, statement against hate and our values and things like that? And I think that was an important question. And where I landed on is that, you know, in the work of diversity, equity, inclusion, you know, equity and equality are not necessarily the same thing. Equality meaning everything, everybody gets treated the same. That sounds like a really good thing, except that every community has different needs, different histories, different nuances. And I was saying in Spanish, matesis, you know, elements to their own history and how it shows up in society, and how, in this case, discrimination manifests in ways that are particular to our community that don't necessarily manifest in those same ways to other communities. And therefore, equity means you have to address the particular things that are inequitable for that particular community in those particular nuanced ways. And this statement, it goes a long ways in addressing the reality of antisemitism and its nuances and its history, and that other communities, like the Latino community, the Asian community, the Black community, the gay community, et cetera, they have their own journeys. And we have our own histories in ways that really need to be addressed at their nuanced level, equitatively, but not necessarily in the same exact way. And I think the mayor's recommendation, that this brings back to Hраг, is wonderful, because I think that sets the stage for doing that, that in this case, we're addressing the Jewish community in its particularities and its facing the rising antisemitism that has been stated. And the other thing I would add is, you know, as representatives of the people, if you will, of Highland Park, we have to take into account the demographics of our population, you know. And when 2% of the U.S. is Jewish, but about 30-plus percent of Highland Park is Jewish, then, you know, the question is, why should Highland Park be a leader in this particular antisemitism statement? And I think the answer should be obvious, that we care about every individual, no matter what demographic they represent, even if they're just a member of one of that particular demographic. And our statement against hate and other things are protective of that. But when you have a high percentage of a particular population, like Jewish, or Latino, or immigrant from Eastern Europe, there's an extra burden on the representatives of the population to say, there are particular needs that we need to address, not only for the sake of our residents, that are numerous, but there is something that falls on us as leaders to say, we actually understand the needs of the Jewish community in better ways than most communities, because it's 30%, right? And so it's not only about leading on behalf of our residents, but I think it's leading on behalf in this nation to say, if Highland Park can speak and does speak up on behalf of the Jewish community and addresses antisemitism, then we save the standards for other communities. Whether they have a heavy Jewish population or whether they have a minuscule one, it doesn't matter. We've made a statement that this needs to be addressed, and they're going to look to Highland Park because of our demographics, and that we, as a city, see that as an extra burden in a good way to lead and address this head-on. So with that, of course, I'm supportive of this as we have been talking.
Thank you. Councilmember Bruckman?
Thank you. My fellow council members, Mayor Roderick, and my fellow residents, tonight we have the chance to take an important and necessary step toward adopting the International Holocaust Remembrance Alliance definition of antisemitism. For me, this is not just another resolution. It's deeply personal. My husband is the grandson of a Holocaust survivor. His family's story is a reminder that antisemitism is not history in a book. It is a lived reality that has scarred generations and still threatens our neighbors today. I have seen the fair causes, and I have seen the strength it takes to stand up to it, which is why my family and I have worked closely with law enforcement and the Jewish community organizations to combat antisemitism by helping to create an antisemitism task force that I'm proud to say Highland Park has embraced and actively participated in since inception in 2023. Building bridges, educating, and ensuring our city has the tools to fight hate wherever and whenever it appears. I know how vital it is to have a clear, shared definition so that we could identify antisemitism in all its forms and act without hesitation. I want to thank everyone who helped bring this resolution forward, including our Corporation Council, and everybody who worked to craft, refine, and champion this. By adopting this definition, we're sending a strong, united message. Antisemitism in every form of hate has no home in Highland Park. We are saying to our residents, to our children, and to the world that this city will always stand on the side of dignity, safety, and respect for every person, which is why I am supporting this initiative. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Councilmember Ross?
Thank you, Mayor. I want to thank, and like others, my colleagues, this is a bit of a repetition of Committee of the Whole, of what I said in Committee of the Whole, but I want to thank again Councilmember Littler for your passionate advocacy for this, and also thank the mayor and counsel, both of my colleagues, Mayor and Councilmember Littler, for working so collaboratively on this. You both achieved an approach, a great approach through very fruitful dialogue that means a lot to the city council and to the city. And follow Councilmember Bruckman in thanking Corporation Council and all the organizations that helped with this effort and provided great information. I want to share that I'm Japanese-American, a woman of color, and I am a Jew. I became an adult bat mitzvah in 2010. Before I was called Yumi Ross, I was and still am Yumi Shilowitz, great-granddaughter of Israel Shilowitz, and proud descendant of accomplished Jews that came to this country as immigrants to build lives here. I agree that it is wonderful that the Human Relations Advisory Group will take up the discussion around discrimination on all fronts, and that is excellent work to do as well. My feeling about addressing antisemitism is very simply, why wouldn't we? Why not? There has been antisemitism for thousands of years. It is unthinkable to me and all of us that it has happened at every juncture in history. I am happy to support this, too.
Thank you. Councilmember Bloomberg?
Thank you. My further comments can be seen in the recordings of the Committee of the Whole that were made earlier this evening. I just want to say three things. I support this because antisemitism is definitely on the rise. This needs to be addressed now. The federal government has mischaracterized acts as antisemitism and weaponized that term. This needs to be done now, and I support it wholeheartedly. I am also very proud of the fact that we are going to continue to examine other issues of hatred. The mayor mentioned that the Human Relations Advisory Group is going to examine that. I would not compare one form of hatred to another. One is as bad as the other. But the issue of antisemitism is what is before us now and is a real need, and that's why we're looking at that tonight, and I'm going to vote in favor of this.
Thank you. Councilmember Center?
Thank you. My fellow council members, I mean, you said everything exactly how I was going to say it in a much more eloquent way than I probably would have. So I appreciate all that was just commented on. Grateful, Councilmember Littler, for you championing this effort, and Mayor Roderick for your great teamwork, along with the rest of us working together to ultimately make this happen. I don't really have much more to add than what everybody else already said, other than just saying how happy I am to be sitting up here to have the opportunity to set an example as a leadership group for our city, and for hopefully many other cities around the state, around the country, around the world, to stand up for what's right and to ultimately get rid of antisemitism. So thank you, everybody, for their, you know, teamwork on this, and I'm just proud to be able to support this.
Wonderful. Thank you. Councilmember Ross?
As I did at Committee of the Whole, I wanted to, and I should have added it to what I just said, but I wanted to thank everybody at the dais, my colleagues on city council for what I thought was a really good discussion with, as Councilmember Center said, with really good points raised. And I just so appreciate that it was a great discussion.
Great. Thank you. Given the momentum of the moment, I'm just going to call the question on item seven. Can I do that, or can I not do that?
You can't. Yes, you can't. You could take just item seven on its own.
I don't think you have a motion. So I will read. Item seven is an ordinance adopting the International Holocaust Remembrance Alliance working definition of antisemitism and directing the city manager to implement anti-discrimination terms of city employment. May I have a motion?
As amended.
As amended.
As amended.
Okay. Thank you. We have a motion in a second. Will the clerk please call the vote?
Councilmember Center?
Aye.
Councilmember Bruckman?
Aye.
Councilmember Ross?
Aye.
Councilmember Tapia?
Aye.
Councilmember Littler?
Aye.
Councilmember Bloomberg?
Aye.
Mayor Roderick?
Aye. Seven ayes, no nays. Item seven is approved. Thank you.
Thank you all for coming tonight. You can stick around, or if you want to leave, but we've got a few other things we're going to talk about. So I am seeking a motion for items one through six, nine, wait, hang on, nine through fifteen, seventeen, eighteen, and nineteen.
Mayor, if I may suggest, I know that item sixteen is removed the consent agenda. Item sixteen is one of three for the same development. Items fifteen through seven. I would recommend that if you're going to pull one, pull all three just for cohesion.
Councilmember Ross, do you want to pull items fifteen, sixteen, and seventeen?
I guess so.
Okay.
You could then, if the council's inclined, Mayor, when we get to that point, you could take all three up in one vote as well. I just.
Sounds good. All right. So I'm going to ask again for a motion for items one through six, nine through fourteen, and items eighteen and nineteen.
So.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Any comments from the council on those items? Nope. Any from the public? Hearing none. Will the clerk please call the vote?
Councilmember Center?
Aye.
Councilmember Bruckman?
Aye.
Councilmember Ross?
Aye.
Councilmember Tapia?
Aye.
Councilmember Littler?
Aye.
Councilmember Bloomberg?
Aye.
Mayor Roderick?
Aye. Seven ayes, no nays. Items one through six, nine through fourteen, and eighteen and nineteen have been approved. Continuing now to the items that have been pulled, item eight is a resolution approving an agreement with the Illinois Department of Transportation regarding improvements to Sheridan Road. Do we need the staff report for this item? No? Okay. This is something we've only been discussing since 2012. Councilmember Ross, I know you wanted to pull this item.
I did. Thank you, Mayor. I pulled it because I thought there should be some more discussion about it. I'm very aware that Sheridan Road sidewalks have been in the works for over 10 years, and there are people who are for it and against it. I appreciate all the points of views. And I walked and drove the length of it, including this afternoon, four times, and speaking to people on both sides of the issue. It's very clear there's a real safety issue and a connectivity issue. And my concern is that we didn't share a preliminary landscape plan that addresses how the areas that are losing trees and landscape will be re-greened. I feel that we should be sharing that out as soon as possible, the re-landscaping plans with the impacted neighborhoods and with, certainly with city council itself. And in addition to that, I would say that that, plus, I won't go into it now, but you all know I have experience with the Central Avenue Bridge project, where a large number of trees were removed and a handful replaced, or certainly a fraction of what was there to begin with was replaced. And I believe that there would be value in, you know, working with a landscape architect for future projects that impact landscaping, trees and landscape. I think that would be worth its weight in gold to be speaking to landscape architects, whether it's contracted out, or whether it's, you know, personnel that we hired for staff. Maybe there wouldn't be support for that. Maybe it's contracted out. But in any event, that's my concern, is sharing with residents a preliminary schematic, if you will, designed for how you re-green the areas. And anyway, that's one of my issues. I don't know if anyone on council has more.
I want to jump in. Given that we replaced, we didn't replace, we put in new sidewalks on Sheridan Road in 2012, coming out of Ravinia Festival going east, because we recognized how dangerous that area was, and that people were taking children and wagons and so forth in the dark as cars were leaving. And we did a beautiful job over there. That was a similar project that we did with IDOT because it was on Sheridan Road. On Green Bay Road, I noticed, when I was knocking doors in 2011, running for mayor, that people had no sidewalks on the west side of Green Bay Road, and were essentially isolated in the dead of winter because of the snow piled up on their front lawns. And we put in sidewalks over there, and we did a beautiful job. And I've walked those areas in the last few days, given the concerns that have been raised about the landscaping in this last, most dangerous stretch, frankly, of Sheridan Road that does not have sidewalk. I've taken pictures of people with strollers and people with wagons in the street getting to the beach. And I know that people who have disabilities can't get down there but for in a car, because they can't take the stairs and they can't take the path through the ravine. And this is the only route that will be able to give people that connectivity to Rosewood Beach. So I appreciate and love that we're Tree City, USA, but I'm also confident in our staff that has that dedication, that knows that that matters deeply to all of us. Sustainability is one of the five, soon-to-be-six bubbles that's up there. I believe it's the green one, because that makes sense. But I am confident that there will be the appropriate landscaping as there was on Sheridan Road in 2012, as there was on Green Bay Road in 2012. I know Councilmember Bloomberg had a comment, and then I'll call in Councilmember Bruckman.
Having been involved with this for, I think, 10 years, and having had an opportunity to speak to some of the residents, a few of whom are with us this evening, I do appreciate the complexity and diversity of the tree issue. But I also hear Kerry Glennor's voice, who advocated aggressively for this. Kerry was formerly the head of our ZBA, the chair of the ZBA, and the chair of our Plan Commission for several terms, lived in the area, and brought my attention back to that area that I was familiar with from my childhood. The issue of safety is paramount, that this has taken 10 years to arrive at this point, is almost unconscionable. A lot of this has to do with our ability now to obtain state money, and for that reason, it's very important to approve this agreement tonight. I am in favor of the city council continuing to discuss tree replacement. I don't see any reason why we should not more carefully inventory the trees that are going to be removed and replace them according to our policies for tree replacement. That can be done. But to me, we have to go forward with at least inking this agreement tonight, approving this agreement tonight, because if we do not, the amount of money and the amount of time that will be lost would be frankly horrendous, and I'm not willing to have a potential accident or fatality, which at that point would become my responsibility as a result of further delay, my responsibility as a member of the council.
Thank you. Councilmember Bruckman?
Thank you. I want to start by acknowledging what we all know, that no one likes losing trees. The beauty of our city and the environmental impact of tree removal are important considerations. But in this case, neither of these things can or should outweigh public safety. Just this past week, I had guests in from out of town with small children, and we walked with strollers and wagons down to Rosewood Beach from the Breside neighborhood. The danger was undeniable, having crossed Sheridan Road multiple times in some stretches we were walking in the street. There is a clear and present danger, and it's one that we've been planning to address for the past decade. The time to act and move this project forward is now. But that said, I also believe that it's essential that we have a clear and comprehensive plan as soon as practical regarding the trees and landscaping, whether that's new trees, plantings, or other landscaping that maintains our city's beauty and environmental health. Thanks.
Thank you. Councilmember Littler? Councilmember Littler?
Okay. So I wasn't on the council when this was passed, and I have to say, five of us weren't. So I'm really grateful to the two people who were here who have seen this through. But I also, I'm grateful to staff because they've been willing to sort of educate us and bring us up to speed with the plans in the meantime. And frankly, in many ways, Councilmember Ross, I don't mean to speak for you, but the two of us, we were concerned because we wanted to get up to speed and understand what was going to happen going forward. For me, one of the questions I have is financial, and I just want to have another, just a good feeling the fact that it is an 80/20 split moving forward, even if there are additional costs, that IDOT is paying for 80% of this sidewalk project, and the city will remain at the 20%. Because I know costs are much higher than they were 10 years ago when we received the grants that were going to cover this. So my one question has to do with the money, and the second question is just on the trees. And I will say that originally, and I was not on the council, I wasn't even on PDC then, but there were over 200 trees that were going to be taken down. And I do know that over the last 10 years, staff along with many residents have worked diligently to bring that number down to 60 trees. So while there may still be additional trees as incidental harm, they have worked pretty hard to make sure that the tree loss is minimal. And frankly, that brought me over because safety is the number one concern. That has not changed. And frankly, and I walk it all the time in the street, so with kids and people with disabilities, I don't even know how it's been possible. So my only request and qualm is really that we ensure that whether it's meandering or whatever it is, to make it the least tree loss possible that we put the sidewalk in.
There is one other piece, the sidewalk itself. Can I?
Let's hear from everybody, and then we can come back to you. Councilmember Tapia?
Yeah, I, you know, I think that this council has proven to be judicious on, you know, the issue of sidewalks and trees and safety. And, you know, we've done, made different decisions in different situations. There was one a few months ago where, in the end, the majority voted against sidewalks as it weighed the, you know, the trade-offs among those three things. You know, when I look at Sheridan Road, I'm also one of those lovers of that road and how beautiful it is and historic and gorgeous, and also been a lover of accessibility to the beach in a way that is safe and also inclusive. And I know it's a trade-off, you know. I wish we could have all three things, but right when I walk there or drive there or bike there, and I also see the images of, you know, baby strollers going down the street, I just can't get past that. It's just too dangerous. And even coming out of Ravinia, even though there's sidewalks, coming out of Ravinia, it stops. And, you know, you just start coming down Sheridan Road, and there's people on the street with the strollers and the wagons. And it just, to me, in the end, this one, for me, is ultimately about safety.
Thank you. Councilmember Ross?
And I probably should have led with that, that I support this project. I think I've spoken to, you know, someone in council to share my thoughts, but I, or at least the city manager, the, safety is a paramount concern, and I spoke to multiple residents of Kerry Avenue, and one of whom said that you took your life into your hands crossing Sheridan Road to get to the beach, to such an extent that I put on orange, on one of my trips, I took on, put on orange safety vest. It is a paramount concern, and I do believe that this plan, having walked it and driven it so many times now, is the best plan in terms of the location of the sidewalks. It was largely about what is the plan for trees and greenery, re-greening that, the wall, the retaining wall? What plan is there for that? And also, I do want to point out, because it's just sort of interesting to note, that there's, from Lakewood to Oakland, there's a, on the east side of the street, there's a sidewalk that is tight to the curb for a full block. I mean, we, and for that matter, bridges, we have sidewalks, you know, with no parkway at all. It's just road and sidewalk. So it does happen, for the many times I was told that you can't have a sidewalk without a parkway separating it from the street. But I do want to be clear that I saw it with my own eyes. I do see the safety issue. I do support the trees, I'm sorry, the sidewalks as is currently outlined. I'd really like to see us do more to work with neighborhoods around, you know, letting them know what the landscaping plan is, even if it's something that, you know, will certainly be altered with time. It just engenders more trust and faith in our work if we're able to share that. And anyway, so that was my reason for pulling it, and that's what I wanted to say.
Thank you. City manager?
Thank you, Mayor. So I'll start, and then Director Bannon can also address. So we, without a doubt, public engagement is very important. So we have had five neighborhood meetings about this project, or open houses, where really anyone is welcome to come and learn about the project. We get feedback from the public. In addition, we have had countless, I mean, we haven't really counted, but countless meetings with individual residents about this project. So that communication is going to remain, of course, you know, throughout this whole project. As it pertains to the landscaping, landscaping is planned in 2027. And so we did relay to the residents that we are going to be, well, we're working with a contractor right now and looking at Jen's Jensen Design Landscaping. And so that would be at a cost for the city. IDOT would not pay for that, so that would be something that we would pay for. But again, we felt it is important in keeping the spirit and the architectural nature of this corridor area. In terms of other sidewalks, there are carriageways along Sheridan Road and other major thoroughfares, but that doesn't mean that IDOT would approve that today, nor candidly would our staff suggest a carriageway on a thoroughfare such as Sheridan Road. It's just too, presents too many safety hazards to have a sidewalk abutting a street of that nature. Even if the city was not, was not pursuing, you know, this project, or if we were going to do it on our own without this agreement with IDOT, this is still IDOT right-of-way. So regardless, we would have to get permit from IDOT and their approval to do anything on their property. So that's an important element. Director Bannon, if you could just talk about the budget and the grant funds, and then anything else about the landscaping.
Yes. So there's two, the city has received two grants for this project. One is a Deco grant, 1.65 million. There is no match on that one. That is 100% grant fund. We have an ITEP grant for 659,800. That is an 80/20 match. So that, and that is the, that is the cap on the ITEP, just to answer your question. So, but, you know, 2.3, a little over 2.3 million dollars in grant funding for this project.
So for clarity, can I just ask? So if, whatever the total of the project is, the 1.6 will go 100% toward that?
Yes.
And then the 600, we would put in 20% toward it, but then anything over that, the city's going to pay for?
Yes. I mean, yes.
Okay.
We would do our 20%. I mean, anything over the 2.3 and some change would be the city's responsibility.
Okay. That's what I wanted to understand. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions from the council?
Yeah, real quick, Mayor.
Sure.
Just, do we have an appreciation for the likelihood of the project staying within that expected total cost?
So our latest cost estimate is, I'd have to, let's see, we had it on the slides. So, but it's about 2.3 million dollars for construction of the sidewalk. That includes a veneer, a veneered wall. So basically, where they mortar in real stone onto the wall, in a Jen Jensen style is what we're shooting for. That was an additional, that was.
500,000.
Yes, it was 500,000. That's included in that, about that 2.3 million dollar construction dollar amount is where we're at with that. Landscaping is extra. Right now, what you'll see in the 2026 proposed budget as a request from staff is 500,000 dollars to do the Jen Jensen design in this corridor.
Subsequent to the completion of the project, but it sounds like the preliminary budget, it lines up with the amount of the grant, with plus the 80/20?
Yes.
Yeah. Okay. Understood.
And we, some of us took a field trip to Naperville to take a look at the stone, to approve it, as looking pretty good.
Great.
How soon would, how soon would a landscape plan be shared with the public?
Well, typically, typically at this juncture, we would have a landscape plan put together. In this particular case, we're doing the Jen Jensen design, bringing in a landscape architect to put that together. So, I mean, right now, we have money in the budget in '26 to develop that plan because it doesn't go until '27. So with 2026, at this point, is a construction year for the wall and the two culverts that IDOT is doing. So, so at this point, we're looking at 2026 for full design, although they have started working on it. I haven't seen anything on it, but there's been some conceptual estimates, as far as budgetary estimates, to do this, working from a Jen Jensen palette and incorporating elements to blend the veneer wall into the surrounding landscape.
We will share that with the public. We'll share that with the councils.
Yes.
So, but that does not include, obviously, the price of the culvert. That's a separate project, correct?
Yes.
So that's number one.
Two culverts.
Yeah, two culverts, right. But then additionally, should there be, well, there's going to be landscaping, because we have, we're going to bring it back.
Yes.
And there's going to be a landscaping plan. So are you guesstimating it's about a half a million dollars for the landscaping and the plan, or the plan is another additional 100?
That's the total.
No. At this point, we are, our budgetary estimate for landscaping is 500,000.
Okay. All inclusive. Great.
Yes. And it is, we are early with that plan, but that's, that's our best estimate at this, at this juncture.
And that's in the budget?
That's in our 2026 proposed. Yes.
So total project cost is about 2.35 million.
Thank you.
Great.
Any other comments or questions from the council?
Actually, one last one. I do want to thank all the residents. Some may not even live in Highland Park any longer, but there were a lot of people who were concerned about safety and sidewalks, and I know that people put a lot of work into this project beyond the city. I mean, there were residents who were advocates for this, and I appreciate that.
Any comments from the public? Anybody wishing to be heard on this item? I figured that might be the case. Come on up and please share your names.
Am I allowed to?
Yep, you are allowed to come forward and share. If you could give them to those guys, and then please share your name in three minutes.
I'm Danny Kahn, 819 Sheridan, lived in Highland Park my entire life. I want to make it really clear, I live, as part of this sidewalk, I live on top of Rosewood Beach. I want to make it really clear, we are not opposed to building the sidewalk. My son, as a scout project, wrote a letter like 20 or some odd years ago to the city asking for a sidewalk, but he got a letter back saying it was too hard to build and too expensive, so the city wasn't going to do it. We've wheeled our kids, so we're all for sidewalk. What we're trying to do is get straight answers on the trees that are going to be taken down to make sure that we're not taking down trees unnecessarily. And as of yet, we cannot get an accurate plan of which trees are coming out. I've got some pictures here of some of the problems. And what I've done is, the black type, turn on, turn on the page with two pictures on the top. I'm delighted to see that two trees that flank a driveway on the north side of Sheridan, as Sheridan goes east-west, that are directly in the path of the sidewalk, were, I assume, would be taken out because the sidewalk goes right through them. What we were told was, no, they're not going to be taken out because the sidewalk is going to meander, a term that I actually invented for this, this concept of bending the sidewalk like five years ago. And we had always been told that couldn't be done, but it apparently is being done. So the two trees that flank the sidewalk there are not being taken out. On the other hand, you take a look, there's a tree to the right with an X through it, and that picture of that tree is above it, and it's a big, important tree. For some reason, the sidewalk is going to go, that one is going to be taken out, and we don't understand why, because there's about eight feet between the end of the right-of-way and that tree. It's filled with arborvitae, but those could come out. But this is a, not an error, this is just something we would like to see changed. If you flip the page over, there's just errors on the, on the plans. Every time we get a plan, we notice errors. I mean, it goes on forever. On the far left and in the middle, the far left, you see a four-trunked tree. And what, the middle picture is looking down at this thing, they're all growing out of one root. And you can see in the lower left of the map, there's four trunks showing together. They're only taking out two of them. Now, that's just not possible. If you've got four trunks of a tree growing out of one root structure, you've got to take them all or none. The, on the far right of that map, there are two, far right, there are two Xs next to each other, and then if you go left a little bit, there's two more Xs. I understand the two far-right Xs, they're in the way, they've got to go. Where there's two Xs to the left, there's only one tree there. And you can see a picture of it, it's on the right. There's no second tree. So I don't know what they're going to take out. My point is, we'd like to see an accurate map. And I will stop.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Anybody else wishing to be heard on this item?
Hi, I'm Hal Sider at 803 Sheridan, neighbor of Danny's. Had a lot of conversations with the city over the years. Appreciate all the time and attention that Ron and Gita have, and others have given to us. Just want to reiterate what Danny said. We've never been opposed to the sidewalk. We just want to make sure that care is taken to minimize the tree loss that is involved. And as I look through the plans and through my conversations with the city officials and looking through the board package, I have a lot of questions, and I don't think the board package did a very complete job in terms of representing at least my understanding of the project. The, you know, and one issue is just what is the amount of tree damage? So the current plan calls for 60. All prior plans had called for over 100 trees to be taken down. That number came down, affects my property a lot because a lot of trees will be, at least not taken down immediately, so we take a wait-and-see approach to see whether or not there's harm. But in conversations with Ron, and Ron, tell me if, you know, you disagree, the city made an assessment, they originally wanted all those trees to come down because they thought there would be such extensive damage to the tree roots. The number came down, but the city has not changed its view that those trees will likely die because of damage to the tree roots. The number came down, not because of any modification to the sidewalk plan, it came down because, only because, well, now we'll take a wait-and-see, but the city's view is that those trees will still die. Is that fair?
If you could just finish your time, and then we can address if the mayor's comfortable.
Okay. I'm just, I don't want to have a he said, she said, but we've had, it was just a conversation with the two of us.
He can respond after you're done, but you have another minute, and then we'll move on.
Okay. Fine. You know, essentially, what we're asking, what I'm asking for is to decouple the culvert construction from the tree destruction and the construction of the sidewalk. The, I don't see a reason really that they have to be done at exactly the same time. If we put off the, for a year, the tree construction, I recognize there's timing considerations with, with bad concerns, you know, and whatnot, but if you put it off, there'll be time to clean up the errors that we think that there are in the, in the plan, time to have talks with IDOT that would allow us to see if there are modifications, variances to IDOT requirements that would let us meander adjacent to the curb, maybe, maybe in other areas, just for very short parts of the sidewalk, and, you know, have confidence that we're not taking down trees that do not need to come down.
Thank you, Mr. Sider. Did you have any, oh, sorry. Come on forward. Thank you.
My name is Jonathan Scheinkup. I'm at 260 Kerry Avenue.
Thank you.
So I'm here speaking in favor of starting this project, because it has been a long time. I was working with Kerry Glennor when he still lived on Kerry, and I remember those days. And as I understand, the reason this got delayed was. and I, as I understand, the reason this got delayed was COVID, things were moving along, and, you know, it came to kind of a halt there, so we're kind of back on this now. But I'm speaking tonight, not just as a resident, but as a parent, whose 15-year-old daughter and her friends use this route to reach Rosewood Beach. They come off Cary Avenue, they step onto Sheridan Road with the beach in sight, but they're forced onto a narrow shoulder at the bottom of a hill, looking over their shoulders for cars they may not see until the last moment. It's not a path, it's really a hazard, because there's no sidewalk, as was mentioned, parents with strollers or older adults or disability, people with disabilities are forced into the roadway, because right now, it's just kind of a clearance path that's been hand, hand dug. Visibility is poor in both directions, especially with the downhill curves. National research shows roads with sidewalks reduce pedestrian crashes by up to 88%, yet here we have no sidewalk. The risk isn't limited to this neighborhood. Kids who walk with my daughter come from all across Highland Park, they come to our house, they all walk down there together, so this is a community-wide safety issue. I also want to be clear, I understand and respect the concerns of nearby homeowners and about privacy and aesthetics in trees. I share those concerns. I drive, bike, and walk past this stretch often, and I do not want to see its charm diminished, but a thoughtful plan, I don't believe will do that. Right now, the area is more overgrown jungle than North Shore elegance, with careful planning and landscaping, we can enhance both beauty and safety. In fact, we have the chance to match the landscape, inviting look at the surrounding areas, creating something better than what exists today. The city has assured residents that a beautification plan will follow, and what I'm hearing tonight, I believe that, with, after the acceptance of the IDOT funds, and I don't want to risk those. Waiting for a perfect design before we vote, risks losing the grant entirely, as I understand. Tonight's decision should be to secure the funding, then work together to ensure the final plan protects safety, privacy, and neighborhood beauty. This is our opportunity to turn a dangerous unpaved shoulder into a safe, welcoming path worthy of Highland Park and without losing what makes this a special place.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any, please come forward.
Stuart Cohen, 730 Sheridan Road, northwest corner of Sheridan and Roger Williams. We've been in this house for 67 years, my in-laws built it in 1958. Ravinia is a very charming part of Highland Park, and I just want to emphasize the importance of maintaining that character as well as we can. I remember when they put the bridge in on Roger Williams over the ravine, and they took out the historic bridge, which was a slightly narrower than, than a standard bridge with built-in antique-style lights on each corner of the bridge, and they just plowed a, a wide bridge over the ravine. Character lost. So, I want to correct something that you said, Mayor, about the Naperville precast stone. My understanding is that there was an agreement that we're going to be using real stone on the retaining wall?
No, I don't believe so. Yes, no?
There's one liner over here, in here, let's show them out in here, so that's the video, so I'm saying, soldier pilot wall with a border, you'll saw.
Right.
So, I just think it's really important that-
So, the form liner that we saw.
Okay. So, it looks even better than what we saw?
Yes.
Great.
Right, so it's important that that not be cut out for budgetary reasons at some point-
Okay.
-in order to maintain that historic character.
Great.
And then, I just want to point out that as far as safety goes, there used to be a four-way stop on our corner, I can see it in our old family films, at Sheridan and Roger Williams, and at some point, that was removed. People are going to the beach, we've got students going to school, families walking all the time, and although you're supposed to slow down or stop for pedestrians in the crosswalk, they don't. And I would urge the city council to fight IDOT, who claims there's not enough of a traffic count to warrant a four-way stop at that location. And for safety as a concern, I think that four-way stop should be returned.
Thank you. I asked that question recently and have been told that they have said no, but I'm with you all day long, I think we need it.
I can't tell you how many accidents I've actually seen myself on the corner.
Right, yeah, no, there needs to be a four-way stop there, absolutely. Anybody else from the public wishing to be heard on item eight?
I'm still.
Okay, with that, I'm seeking a motion to approve item eight, a resolution approving an agreement with the Illinois Department of Transportation regarding improvements to Sheridan Road. Do I have that motion?
Second.
Any further comments from the council? Nope? Okay, well, please call the vote.
Councilmember Center?
Aye.
Councilmember Bruckman?
Aye.
Councilmember Ross?
Aye.
Councilmember Tapia?
Aye.
Councilmember Littler?
Aye.
Councilmember Bloomberg?
Aye.
Mayor Roderick?
Aye, seven ayes, no nays, item eight is approved, and I want to thank you for coming this evening and for your steadfast meetings with our staff, we appreciate where your concerns lie, and we will look forward to working with you as we move forward with this project. Thank you, much appreciated. Items 15, 16, and 17 will be grouped together for omnibus consideration. Councilmember Ross, you had asked me to pull item 16.
Yes.
I'm going to be reading it, and then I'll call on you. An ordinance granting a specially used permit for a plan development and approving an inclusionary housing plan, 2090, 2100 Green Bay Road, and 580 to 582 Glenview Avenue, as amended. Now, you can go ahead.
It really is very brief, I just wanted to thank the manager for letting us know, and thank the developer for listening to the question about putting more windows on the Green Bay Road-facing facade elevation of that development, as opposed, it was looking overly, in, not just my opinion, but, you know, like a blank wall to, to Green Bay Road, and this is, should improve that, and it, I was, you know, appreciated that they were responsive.
Councilmember Littler?
So, I'd like to also make a statement on this, when this project was considered, I was the liaison to the PDC, and so I sat through all the meetings and listened to the commission, who did a very good job of reviewing this project. I have to say that while it's not the actual density that is too intense for this project, every single side setback has been relaxed, so that instead of this project having, being 33% free, it is, I'm sorry, it's 44% of bulk. It is, it's, instead of a 25-foot setback, it's nine feet, instead of a 16, it's eight feet. At every point, it is so close to the road. So, while I think it's actually a beautiful project, it's a much-needed project, it is a great mix of affordable housing and good living, it's taking three incredibly blighted properties and putting up lovely townhouses, the way it is built, it is just too much in terms of sidewalk cement and not enough green and not enough borders from the streets. The mayor actually had a very good idea, which is something I'd like to ask for to comment in terms of-
The word is espalier that you're looking for.
Thank you, an espalier to add more character and tree to the outside of these buildings. So, I would ask that when the developer moves forward with this project, in addition to the beautification and making it a little different with the windows, because it is taking up so much of these lots, that we include an-
Espalier.
Thank you, on these projects, that we do our best to landscape it in such a way that the people who live in these townhomes still have the feel of Highland Park, which is the green, the borders, and there's a reason we have these setbacks. So, it happens to be a beautiful project, but we need to enhance it, and so I wanted to make sure we commented on that.
Any other comments from the council? No? Any from the public? Hearing none?
Someone define espalier.
I'm so sorry. Happy to define espalier. So, in France, often, there are like tree-like forms that are kind of built out of wood or built out of wire that has like a tree shape against a wall. So, in an area where there's not enough room for a full 3D tree, basically a 2D tree on the wall, so espalier, yes, thank you. Okay, with that, I'm seeking a motion to approve items 15, item 16 as amended, and item 17.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, well, the clerk, please call the vote.
Councilmember Center?
Aye.
Councilmember Bruckman?
Aye.
Councilmember Ross?
Aye.
Councilmember Tapia?
Aye.
Councilmember Littler?
Aye.
Councilmember Bloomberg?
Aye.
Mayor Roderick?
Aye, seven ayes, no nays, items 15, 16 as amended, and 17 are approved. Continuing on to other business, item 20, consideration of a plan development amendment, design review, amendment to a development agreement and re-subdivision with modifications, Laurel Park Phase 2, corner of Laurel Avenue and McGovern Street, including 844 to 768 Laurel Avenue and 1682 to 1652 McGovern Street. Do we need a presentation on Joel's birthday?
I do not need a presentation, Mayor, I just-
You have something you want to say?
Yeah, I believe this is the same developer who is responsible for the project we just approved. I've had the pleasure of working with them in the Housing Commission and on this particular development, and I want to thank you for your flexibility, your insight, this is a piece of property that has been aching to be completed for some time, and I want to thank you for that.
Thank you. Any other comments from the council? Councilmember Littler?
So, this one also has required additional building, and while it's not the 44%, it's at a 40%, but I want to distinguish, because this particular project, it fits into its other surroundings, and when the PDC reviewed it, we enjoyed truly the fact that you had apartments, the fact that you had townhouses, it gave it a really good feel and a community feel, so you, it can be done, even if you go over that amount. So, I wanted to commend you on this one, having just drawn back on the other.
Great, thank you. Any comments from the public on this item? Seeing none, we'll, I need a motion on item 20.
So moved. Second.
Will the clerk please call the roll, or the vote?
Councilmember Center?
Aye.
Councilmember Bruckman?
Aye.
Councilmember Ross?
Aye.
Councilmember Tapia?
Aye.
Councilmember Littler?
Aye.
Councilmember Bloomberg?
Aye.
Mayor Roderick?
Aye, seven ayes, no nays, item 20 is approved. Item 21 is an ordinance amending a specially used permit for a plan development at 445 Central Avenue. Any comments, questions? Councilmember Bloomberg?
I've had an opportunity to review the packet, and I want to give a little additional background that I'm not sure was in the packet, that actually precedes my time and the mayor's time on the city council. This is a piece of property that exists where the Highland Park Movie Theater used to be. The city of Highland Park, an earlier administration purchased the Highland Park Movie Theater when it was determined that the owner of the movie theater wanted to sell that building to be demolished and to erect an office building in its place, and the city decided that the vibrancy of that area of Highland Park would be adversely affected by the loss of the movie theater. In the subsequent period of time, most of the businesses and property owners in that area encouraged the city council that in the reuse and repurposing of that property, that we keep their interests in mind and the need to maintain vibrancy in that area of Highland Park. When it was determined that the movie theater building just couldn't be saved and safely used anymore as a, as a movie theater, as a building, and had to be torn down, the city council, including myself and Mayor Roderick, began a lengthy plan to take in different proposals for the use of that property. We decided on the current use because it was promised that on the first floor, it was going to include uses of a restaurant and retail sales. It has remained vacant in the entire time that that property has been rebuilt. I don't doubt the intentions of the owner, but given the background of this building, the hard work that was done, and the opportunity for other kinds of developments, including residential developments that were proposed, and a somewhat serious effort to try to reconstruct the movie theater and use that for other purposes, we chose this. And given that, I understand it's been vacant for a long time, the proposal to put a non-sales tax generating business into that property is so inconsistent with the intentions of this city council and the purpose of selling to this particular applicant to buy the property, that I can't vote in favor of this. I understand it may remain vacant for some time, but there was a statement in the packet that somehow this was related to the POSSO, the pedestrian-oriented overlay service district that was repealed sometime after this property was built. It has nothing to do with this, this was a direct relationship between the sale by the city of this property to this developer, so for that reason, I'm going to vote against this.
Thank you. Corporation Council, should we be taking 21 and 22 together?
You certainly can, Mayor, they do relate to the same project, as you know, so you can, you can entertain a vote on both.
A motion for 21 and 22, okay. Thank you, Councilmember Bloomberg. Councilmember Tapia?
Yeah, it's helpful to hear Councilmember Bloomberg's historical first-person account, but that's the history I understand as well, and, you know, if I just look at the sequence, it was a very coveted property, a very beloved spot, it meant a lot to the city, the city owned the property, the city wanted to make sure it went to the best property owner would have, would be able to execute the vision that the city had when they bought the property, and there was like, yeah, sure, put some offices on the second floor, whatever, but on the first floor, make it something vibrant and, you know, really like a restaurant or something that generates revenue and, and sort of projects or continues the spirit of what that movie theater was. And, and so, and then for the property to be empty for 10 years, when I know that our city staff has sent many interested parties who had good, exciting visions for what could be possible, and the city never gave up, the city kept sending, and call it anecdotal or call it factual, but we know that consistently, we would hear back that there would not be returned calls, or they, you know, the visits didn't yield too much, so who, you know, in the end, leadership is about execution, and promises are about execution, and commitment are about execution, so whatever the reasons are that these calls were not returned, or there wasn't a deal being able to made with these very excited restaurateurs that had some great ideas, whatever the case may be, 10 years is an indication of failure to execute against a promise that was made, not only to the city of Highland Park, but to the residents of Highland Park, because our responsibility is to say that is owned by the city on behalf of the residents, and the city council at the time made a decision that that was the best buyer, given the promise that they made and a confidence that that property owner was successful, business person enough, and knew property and knew business enough, that there was a confidence that they would be able to execute on that promise. And 10 years later, not only is it empty, but they come to us asking for an exception and a way out of that promise, to put two things that have nothing to do with the promise that was made. I don't know, that's hot spa. I really, I don't understand how you-
Hot spa.
I say only on juice, person. That's right, that's right. But you got the spirit of it, didn't you, right? I don't understand.
Right.
And, and this is a property owner that knows this community, has a lot of relationships in this community, there's been personal intuitions to this property owners from a variety of people that know this person well, I just don't understand. So, I am a hard no on this.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else? Councilmember Ross?
Thank you for, for sharing that, and, and Councilmember Bloomberg for the history, and Councilmember Tapia for the passion, and, and I, you know, I, you know, I talked to at least one, you know, beloved retail owner on the street who felt, you know, with the resignation, that it, something would be better than nothing in, in those spaces, but when I, you know, and I considered that, 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 but the flip side of it is that a, you know, dermatologist, high-end or not, and, and, you know, a private equity company would, would basically not enliven the street, I mean, for the most part, those are going to be drawn shades or, or, you're not, it's not something that, the kind of business that's inviting looks in. I don't know that it's, you know, better than having a vacant at this point in terms of vitality, and, and I agree with the comments that have been made about the promises made to the city and promises made to, you know, not only to city council, but to the city of, of Highland Park, so I'm, I'm a no as, as well.
Thank you. Councilmember Center?
Yeah, I, I, you know, I often-
Yeah, I, you know, I often like to have a fresh perspective and think about current facts and circumstances, because things change over time, but I'm wholeheartedly in agreement with everything that Councilmember Bloomberg and Tapia and Ross said. We have to remember the history in this example, and we need to execute that parcel in a way that is accretive to our business community and to our community at large, so I'm also a hard no.
Okay. Anybody else? Councilmember Brooklyn?
Thank you. I would also like to echo, I'm also a no based on the history. It's been 10 years. I know multiple restaurants could have definitely gone into this spot, and it just hasn't happened yet, and I don't think there's any value in, at this point, a dermatologist's office. I think it's better off just being where we're at, which is not much better off, so I'm a no too.
Thank you. Councilmember Littlewar?
So I have a couple of questions for staff, and I don't know if you can answer them, but one of my considerations is, do we know how long the leases are that are proposed for these alternate uses?
We do not, but the applicant representative...
The applicant is here.
The applicant is here.
Right.
Hi. Bill McGwin, I represent the owner of the property. The lease for the dermatologist, and that tenant is actually here with me tonight, is proposed for 10 years. We don't have a lease in place for the other tenant, not even sure that's going to come through. We certainly want to make sure we have the dermatologist in who we've negotiated a lease, and I think she would be able to get up and speak to the nature of her business and what that would look like to pedestrian traffic versus, you know, restaurants or retail, or many of the, you know, vacant storefronts that are just stores down from our building. So, you know, I'd like to say, it's very easy to point out how we haven't returned calls, we haven't taken tenants, excuse me, we failed in the execution, but that's easier said than done. Have the other vacant storefronts on the street failed as well to bring in tenants? You know, the owner of the property has his family offices above the top floor of the building, and it's important to him that he has good tenants in there, on tenants that he can have, you know, coexist with in his building, and on good, reasonable business terms with good credit. And that is not as easy as maybe the council has made it out to be.
I appreciate your comments. I have to tell you, as somebody who has actively recruited certain restaurants, had conversations with the owners of those restaurants, who are elsewhere in the North Shore region, we would love to have any one of these, and to have phone calls not returned, very, very frustrating. We've spent staff time, I've spent personal time, we've tried to help them figure out how to move things forward, and I just have to say, I'm deeply disappointed. Councilmember Littlewar?
So my next question was for staff, but in a sense, the mayor just answered it, and that was, we have economic development people. We are frequently going to our landlords, our property owners, with potential tenants. We have people who do outreach. Have you had people or interest in the permitted uses area?
Absolutely.
With regard to this?
Oh, yes, many, yes.
Okay, so that answers my two questions, and then my statement is as follows. I happen, when I first got on the council, I was the member who introduced getting rid of the POSSO, so that it would free up space to be able to be used for things other than restaurants. And while I agree with Councilmember Bloomberg that that isn't relevant anymore to this, what I will also say is, this particular owner made a bigger commitment through a private agreement in saying that this was the type of usage that they would adhere to. The city has used its best efforts also to do it. It's one thing if you came to us and said, with a stopgap measure of two years, because we don't want it empty for two years, we would let someone else come in, but to take space that is that large, that could have been used for a restaurant, which was the vision for this, of this council of late, and the vibrancy that we're trying to develop on the east side, and the requests for evening activity in this area, evening, meaning nighttime vibrancy, to support some of the existing restaurants, I can't support this even though I really had wanted to.
Two years is just patently unrealistic.
I understand.
Given build-out costs.
I understand.
That would be honestly impossible.
And frankly, even a two or three, but to lock this city up in a corner that we had really looked to for additional vibrancy, and to be our cornerstone in that area, it's a tough ask of this council, as I'm beginning to hear.
And I'm frustrated also to hear that you may not even have the second tenant that was purported to be basically a go. So now you're asking for all of these changes, all of these amendments, and I do appreciate what you're trying to bring to the community, but it's unbelievable to me. Councilmember Bloomberg, and then we'll take the vote.
Yeah, I just wanted to add, first of all, this building was designed to have a restaurant in it and retail, and not all of the buildings that are adjacent that may be empty are ready to go ahead with a restaurant. This building was designed in a particular way in front to provide a semi-public area to further enhance that aspect of this building to be inviting in that way. I won't belabor it further, but this was carefully considered at the time that this contract was entered into between the city and this owner.
I have one more thing.
Okay, and then we'll wrap this up. Councilmember Littlewar, then Councilmember Ross?
I just want to say, I think, I believe that the original vision of this owner was beautiful, in the sense of having a restaurant that really was not only special, but that would enhance a population in our community, and we loved that vision.
Yep.
And in so many ways, we would urge, I personally, and I know the mayor would agree with me on this, to go back to that dream of that restaurant.
That is still the plan.
And that would be phenomenal. So I just want to reiterate that...
That is still the plan.
We love the original purpose. We're glad you entered into the agreement, but unfortunately, it sounds like we're moving in a different direction for this particular proposal.
Councilmember Ross?
It was also my understanding, I thought I heard from the manager's office, I'm not sure that, you know, on the second floor, that the office is not really occupied by, I mean, so I, it's my understanding that the family office isn't even fully occupying that second floor, and...
That's not correct.
Okay, that's not correct. Okay.
I work there.
You work there, okay, okay. But I stand behind the other comments that this, you know, there were promises made, and in good faith, the city entered into agreement that was, you know, didn't happen. The outcome didn't happen.
Okay. So, heart, oh, sorry, Corporation Council, can I ask for a motion in a second on 21 and 22 for us to take a vote in opposition, or how would you propose a rule?
You can, Mayor. You can, if you want, you could entertain a motion to deny the ordinance as part of 21 and the resolution as part of 22.
If you'd like to come forward.
Sure.
Thank you for letting me say a few words.
Absolutely.
My name is Dr. Rachel Leford Inc. I'm the tenant that has been working with the property owner for the past year in designing a space in one of the suites. I'm sorry, I'm getting emotional. I just, we have put so much, a year of my life designing this space, I had no idea about this ordinance when I signed the lease, and I was very hopeful that my dream to bring a very high-end dermatology office would come to life, and I think I've expressed before that my intention is to use the front of the space for retail purposes. So I wish I could pull up the plans that we have to show you what we are intending to use the front of the space for. I have a number of brands that I'm planning to have there where people could come in off the street. I also had the understanding that the center space would be used for a cafe, which I thought would be lovely. People could come have a coffee, use, you know, I really had a vision for this space and how it would contribute to that piece of property. I looked all over the North Shore in searching out the perfect spot for what I envisioned, and really thought I found it in this space. Financially, this is going to be very difficult for us, and I understand the history here. I understand the promises that were broken. I just really urge you to consider what you're giving up in exchange for an empty space to continue to sit there. I want to be a part of this community. I want to provide dermatologic care to this community. I want to have this vision that I've spent rebuilding come to fruition. I understand everybody's concerns. I wish there was something I could promise you more than what I'm trying to alleviate those concerns, but I thank you for your time.
Thank you, and I know you've been working for over a year. I'm thinking we should have Economic Development be in touch, and we can find another location where your dream can come true, because I don't know that this is going to work out, but I definitely, I feel your passion, and I feel your wish to be, and I know we've talked about your wish to be part of the community. Councilmember Tapia?
Yeah, I mean, it's heartbreaking to hear your story, and it's not your fault. I would urge a conversation with the property owner for not informing you of the situation, and there is a very likely way out. I mean, if there's a restaurant going out there, in there, then, you know, and a retail thing next to it, you know, dermatology office is not out of the question, but right now, the main promise that was made is not fulfilled, and you have been caught in it, and I'm really sorry to hear that.
Me too, me too. With that, I'm seeking a motion to deny items 21 and 22.
So moved.
Second.
Will the clerk please call the vote?
Councilmember Center?
Sorry, the motion is to deny.
Yes.
So...
So affirmative is to deny.
Yeah.
Aye.
Councilmember Bruckman?
Aye.
Councilmember Ross?
Aye.
Councilmember Tapia?
Aye.
Councilmember Littlewar?
Aye.
Councilmember Bloomberg?
Aye.
Mayor Roderick?
Aye. Seven ayes, no nays, and I would urge our economic development team...
Absolutely.
...to reach out. Thank you so much. Item 23 is an ordinance amending section 71 dot 360 of the Highland Park Code of 1968 as amended regarding electric bicycles. I want to thank everybody who raised their nuanced questions since we first passed this ordinance. I do want to share with everybody that I had a conversation with Illinois Speaker of the House about four weeks ago and raised this issue, highlighting that it's really ridiculous to have a patchwork of ordinances addressing bicycles that obviously go through various jurisdictions and municipalities, and he assured me that likely in the veto session, which is in October of this year, that the Illinois General Assembly will take a look at that, but in the meantime, we have it on our agenda. I know we don't need a presentation on this, because we've talked about it a lot, but I'm happy to hear from the public. If anybody from the public wants to be heard on item 23, please come forward. Hi, and thank you for bringing this to us at the beginning.
Thank you so much. I actually come here, my name is Barb Sarita, I've lived here over 35 years, almost 40, and I come here with so much gratitude toward the city council and to you, Mayor, for passing on July 11th the e-bike ordinance, which particularly with respect to those riders under 16, who are, have really posed an acute safety risk for our community. I do have two requests, one pertaining to the amendment, one pertaining to implementation. I know that we were going to pause a little on implementation, and I understand that, but I'm asking specifically if we can maybe speed up the timeline. We, I have noticed since July 11th, almost an escalation of reckless behavior in violation of the ordinance, just to give you a few examples, over two dozen since July 11th. I personally witnessed kids riding the wrong way down the street, abreast, like on Elm Place, which is one way, the wrong direction, parking their motorbikes, and these are all the kids under 16, that's the population I'm speaking of. Parking their motorbikes in the middle of intersections to do wheelies, riding full speed through stop signs, tailgating cars, riding their motorbikes full speed on sidewalks, both on Central as well as in residential areas near me. In fact, today at 12:45, I was walking, I'm driving by the post office and saw six bikers in a row, single file, going full speed down the sidewalk on Central toward the business district. It's just endless. On the few occasions I've interacted with these cyclists, I've kindly asked them to move out of the way, and I've gotten responses like, well, as long as the bike has pedals, I can go wherever I want, despite the motor. They've told me they can ride on sidewalks as long as it's under 20 miles per hour, think about that. And they've also told me, I know my rights, lady, I can ride wherever I want. I'm not giving the...
Who are their parents?
Yeah. And I'm not giving the decibel level and the expletives, I figure we can all imagine those. Okay, so we've had teenagers, right? On a few occasions, I've taken video or photos, and kids have run toward me screaming, stop video, you don't have my consent. They have a misunderstanding of the law as well as, videotaping as well as the rules of the road, and because it's public, we can tape as much as we want. And some, most recently, have followed me, yelled at me, most recently in the Park Avenue Beach, I did have to call the police because they came after me screaming, okay, because I was videotaping, and I totally ignored them, but the point is, they're very aggressive, they're very angry, and they're violating the law. So now we are proposing in this amendment that we siphon these kids to the bike trail, where there's toddlers, there's people walking dogs, there's elderly pedestrians. I would just ask that you consider maybe some sort of safety addition, like for example, speed limits, something to have a safety net for the people that are walking on that bike trail, given what we know about these underage...
Thank you. Thank you. Anybody else wishing to comment on item 23?
Hi, Peter Sarita. I've been in Highland Park for over 30 years as well. I just want to congratulate the council for acting decisively on this growing problem of e-bikes in the community, and I think you've done a great job. You acted very decisively with dispatch, but I'd just like to ask you to reconsider this idea of opening up the Green Bay Trail to e-bikes. It's a narrow trail lined on both sides with thick forests, so there's no bailout, you know, it's narrow, there's nowhere to go. And this is a trail, as Barb just mentioned, there's a lot of little kids on bikes with training wheels, people walking their dogs, and we all know how unpredictable dogs can be when they're walking, they can smell something and go off into the woods or cross the trail. I don't think we want to make this the only place in Highland Park where young teenagers can legally ride their e-bikes. We've all seen, we've all seen packs of these little daredevils bombing around Highland Park at speeds of close to 30 miles an hour, with little care for pedestrians, as Barb mentioned. We don't, we don't need that on the trail. I would, I would just ask you to take a pause before making the amendment. You had, you had a great discussion earlier about the safety issues relating to the lack of sidewalks on Sheridan Road. The safety issues on the Green Bay Trail are just as critical, and just to give you an example, an individual, an individual which is hit by a fast-moving bike can be severely injured. My adult daughter was hit by a fast-moving bicycle in London several years ago, and it was only because we were able to find the world's leading expert on that specific type of injury that she is able to walk today. That was a bicycle. Can you imagine what would happen? And bicycles are a lot lighter than e-bikes. We all know e-bikes can weigh 50 pounds. So I'm just, you've done a great job so far, let's not ruin it, let's, let's keep up the momentum. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
My name is Jeff Wellick. I'm a Highland Park resident. I'm an avid cyclist, and I'm one of the co-owners of the Highland Park Track Bicycle Store, which is the only bicycle store in town. We do sell e-bikes. They represent about 4% of our bicycle units, so a relatively small number. Are, all of the e-bikes which we sell have UL certifications, and they're built to the highest standards. Our average e-bike retails for around $3,500, just to give you a little bit of background. There's a lot of places that you can find online selling these Chinese imports for $400, $500, $600, and I think those are specifically the problems that we've got around our town. As a cyclist, I frequently ride through the North Shore and in the northern suburbs and on our bike paths. Cyclists know the conditions of the roads. I can tell you probably much better than almost anybody. We see all the potholes... We see all the potholes, we know where there's problems, but just, that's just a comment. In the past two years, I've definitely seen these motorbikes on the bike paths and it's troubling. I've spoken to some of the council people about this. These are electric motorcycles. They're not e-bikes. And I think that is a huge consideration and need, needs to be understood. A motorcycle with pedals is not a bicycle. And what we sell are e-bikes, and those e-bikes are pedal, are generally pedal-assisted. One has to be actively pedaling to engage the motor in almost all cases. These bikes were developed really for commuting, so people get to work faster, to go greater distances, and allow people who maybe otherwise couldn't get some physical activity, be able to ride, keep up with their friends or family where they are not as strong cyclists, but they want to ride with them. So what concerns, so what concerns me as a citizen about safety and as a cyclist is that these bicyclists, if you want to call them that, are creating problems for real cyclists. It's, you know, it's, cyclists have their own problems in general. I don't have much time, sorry. What I would ask the city to do is to start enforcing the ordinances that you've passed. I think we need to allow personally the bike, e-bikes driven by adults to ride on our city bike paths, okay? A lot of people have them and they're cyclists and they obey law, they're adults. The problem is, are the under 16 who are riding these motorcycles effectively around town, we've all seen them, and I think, and I would ask if the police have enforced and issued any citations because I haven't seen it. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, thank you. Anybody else from the public wishing to be heard?
Hi, Michael Laxner, 1967 Cavell. I'm also very concerned about the e-bikes on the Skokie Valley, being allowed on the Skokie Valley Trail. I just want to read this definition and it follows up on what he stated earlier. Vehicles with electric motor greater than 750 watts are not e-bikes. Any type of device with an electric motor beyond a class 1, 2, or 3 electric bicycle is not a legal e-bike and should not be called or treated like an e-bike. These devices are commonly referred to as e-motos, AKA out-of-class electric vehicles. When used by adults, e-motos are only allowed in travel lanes intended for automobiles, not on trails or infrastructure intended for bicycle scooters, personal mobility devices such as motorized wheelchairs or other legal modes. Many devices are, that are marketed to children and teens fall into the e-moto care, category. These devices should only be used by children and teens on personal property, not on sidewalks, trails, bikes, infrastructures, or roads. This came off of the Ride Illinois website and, and they, under their municipal guidance for these roads. I've had plenty of personal experiences with, with e-bikers on these, what I call e-motocycles. And just last Saturday night on my way home at 1:30 in the morning, being out with my friend, I'm driving down Tewee between Lehigh and Carpenter, and I see a, a little bit of a, something coming alongside me, and I look over and it was a young kid on an e-bike keeping up with me at 35, 40 miles an hour, and he's just weaving back and forth, he's having a grand old time. No helmet, no light. And, and we finally pulled up to a stoplight and I said, son, you got to get, you know, if you're out here, if you're out here legally, because he might have been over 60, I couldn't tell his age for sure. You know, you got to get a helmet and, and, and a light on that thing. And he's like, yeah, I guess I'll have to look into that. I mean, just nudge him, didn't care about it, but I've, I've had five or six of them on the bike path, blocked the whole bike path, and as I approached them, I'm like, you know, fellas, I need to pass. And they just passive aggressively took their sweet time to get over, and when I got close, I had to slow down even get through the passing lane. And I said, fellas, you can't block the passing lane. Well, you can imagine the looks and, and the gestures I received from that.
Barb has them on video, yes.
It's, it's a sanctuary for me, that bike path, it really is. It's, I, I'm out there five, six days a week and I really enjoy it, but it's becoming less enjoyable, so I, I really hope you consider, and I don't like the fact that under this ordinance, it appears to me that now gas-powered engines will be allowed on the bike path also, like mopeds or go-karts. So I'm curious about that aspect. And also why, why you don't have jurisdiction over this when the state law says within your jurisdiction, you can restrict these things. It's unclear to me why you don't have jurisdiction.
So we do have jurisdiction right now, and I can just tell you though that we have our jurisdiction and then there's Glencoe, and then there's Lake Forest. And, you know, it's like, if people are going on the bike path, they're going through these different jurisdictions, so different laws are applying.
State report mentioned that you have the jurisdiction over Green Bay Road, you don't have it over Skokie.
Mayor, if I could correct, the Skokie Valley.
Well, that's, yeah, the Skokie path, exactly.
But the state law says within your jurisdiction, municipality jurisdiction, so I'm unclear why you don't have that.
Right, I'll let the city mayor answer. Thank you.
Okay.
The Skokie Valley Trail is owned by Lake County. We maintain it through an intergovernmental agreement. Lake County has indicated that we do not have jurisdiction to impose a regulation on their property and they, they permit e-bikes on their, on their path system. And so we carried forward eliminating the prohibition for both the Green Bay Trail and then just to be consistent for the Skokie Valley Trail.
But if there's an accident or some kind of crime on there, our jurisdiction can go in there and clean it up though, or take care of it. So it, it just frustrates me that.
Appreciate that.
It's, it's, it's in there.
And that's why it'll be important to have a statewide law, frankly, to then be consistent everywhere.
Absolutely, you got to clean it up.
And they got, he got an earful from probably 12 different mayors from across the region.
Good for you.
So, um, do you want to say something? Okay, I see you. Councilmember Littler?
So, um, first of all, I, I tend to go down to the Park Avenue Beach too, and in addition to that, I, I've had several encounters with these groups of kids. I walk everywhere in this city. If I don't, I'm only allowed to go downtown in my car once a day and I live at Lake Hook Road, which means I've got a lot of walking or biking to do in order to get things done around this town on my own. So when I walk down to Park Avenue Beach, I've had two or three incidents where either the non-emergency number has been called, or in fact, a park district employee has attempted to take these kids and get them off our backs when they're yelling at us at, or coming down at full blast down the hill and making the curve on the brand-new walkway, which is a path and through a public parking lot. So I completely concur with everything that Ms. Sarita said because I've seen it firsthand myself. But in addition to that, when I usually walk, I go up and down the path because.
The Green Bay Trail.
The Green Bay Trail. And when I'm on the Green Bay Trail, I've now had three incidents since we've walked where I actually thought I was hit, but they were going so fast that they just like went right by my arm that they never touched me, but they were so close to me that for a second I thought I was hit. Of course, I'm standing in one piece, so I wasn't hit, so that is clear, but it is such a narrow area that when someone goes by you that quickly, and I'm sorry, I don't know the difference on my own two feet between 10 miles an hour, 14 miles an hour, or 20 miles an hour, but I can tell you however fast it was, it was a whoosh, and they were gone before I knew anything other than the fact, two of them were young, one of them was not. One of them was a grown-up in a full-out fight. So I, as a council member though, not as a walker, not as a resident, I think this council acted really responsibly. We rarely do something at a committee of the whole and then vote on the legislation that night. And staff came to us and they said, we have had a lot of complaints, a lot of calls from the police. We've had all sorts of near misses or outbursts, and so you need to act immediately. And I think this council really researched it and we thanked staff at the time for getting us this information, and then we took action so that over the summer, we would be able to keep our residents safe until things were worked out. What I would like to propose this evening is the fact that we continue this vote. I understand that there are a lot of people who are responsible adults who might want to be on the trail, but number one, the state is considering this, that's great news. Number two, we haven't given it the summer. I'm sorry, I don't know how many citations have been issued since we passed this. The signs have not yet been hung up. We haven't given it a test where we know if this was effective, and we worked really hard to protect everybody over the summer. This is early August. What about the rest of August? What about September? This is prime biking time, and these kids are out of school right now, okay? I don't feel that it is, it is safe for our residents to call this back. It's not good lawmaking. We, we did something, we did it blanket, and maybe we were considering narrowing it down, but not until we protected our residents over the summer. The summer is not done. This is too early to consider this. Maybe it's the kind of thing, we can either have staff or law enforcement tell us the way to carve it out, or the state can carve it out for us. Maybe in September or October, we should pull this back, but at this point, I am totally opposed to pulling back what we did, I think, in the best interests of our residents, because this is a threat. It's a threat I have felt physically, it's a threat I have heard physically. You know, I, I do walk more than most, but to have it happen twice in one day or on another day, just in completely different areas of the same path, it's not acceptable. And that's me, I'm a grown-up. So imagine someone with a, an animal or child or a baby carriage or whatever it is. The kids can't move fast enough to get out of the way, and, and it's, it's hard, I'm telling you, I felt like I jumped over, and then you don't know there's two of them coming. So we move over because somebody says on your left, we run over there, and then there's a second one coming and they whoosh, right by us. And my kid has been hit by an e-bike. He was on a bicycle, he was wearing a helmet, but this guy took him out because frankly, his, but the other guy's bike weighed a lot more and he was an adult, so he's my kid. But he was hit on a boardwalk and it just took him out, and he was laying there dazed and thank God for residents of that city for taking him over to the hospital, because that, it didn't knock him out, but he was laying there because of the sheer force of an e-bike. So I, I feel really strongly that we need to give this a better shot. We need numbers from law enforcement and from staff to make, help us make the best decision, and we need to protect our residents in any way we can see that we should, and we tried to do that once, I'm not ready to call that back.
Thank you. And I just want to be clear that the action that's being considered this evening is simply to remove the prohibition on the Green Bay Robert McClory Trail, that we can't change it on the Skokie Valley Trail, and that we're not changing any other aspect of the law. Councilmember Tapia?
Yeah, I, I appreciate the comments from the public, particularly the distinction that was being made between e-bikes and, I don't know what the term would be for the other ones, but the more motorized ones, that I, I should sort of, more like, like motorcycles. I, I think that's a very important distinction that I'm not sure if we have made that distinction, because even hearing resident Laxner, even as he was reading the description of e-bikes that was different than the other, he kept using the word e-bike to describe the motorized ones. So it's very easy to mix those two things up. So I think that's a very important distinction because I'm of the point of view that I, I favor e-bikes in the, in the more narrow sense of the word, as it was described by the owner of Trek, because the reasons are, it, I think it's an inclusive vehicle, it allows families to ride together, spouses either way, that might not be as strong as the one that is a stronger rider. And we are a city that encourages biking, we're trying to do more backpass and connectivity. So to me, it feels like a contradiction to say we want to be a bike city and then one of the trends in technology around bicycles is the e-bikes, again, the more narrow sense of the word, and I think that would be a contradiction to take that out, even as we say that our philosophy is to be a more connected, bike-friendly city. Now, from a policy perspective and a safety perspective, we do have a problem to solve when there's reckless biking and too fast, the question, but that is not unlike the problem of car drivers or motorcycle drivers on the highway or on the streets being reckless, right? We don't ban them, we actually regulate them, and for, and we actually also do education because so much of a good community is one that there's norms in the community and it's becomes, it's, to me, this is a culture issue less than a, and less than a regulatory or legislative issue. There's some education that needs to happen, enforcement can help with certain elements that we put in place, but I don't think we've got to legislate our way all the way to good behavior. Part of good behavior is a culture change. So what is happening with these young people? You know, are we involving the schools on some education on this? Can the police be part of the education process? I, I think we can, you know, when we did character counts and other things, we put signs throughout the, the city, I mean, that's part of the culture change. So I think we need to be more holistic in our intervention, some regulation, yes, some banning of certain types of bicycles, making a nuanced distinction between those and, and the e-bikes that really have been bringing more inclusion participatory biking. And also, let's make this a community norms and community culture thing where we educate one another in a variety of ways to have safer cycling in the same way that we have safer driving and safer motorcycling. I think we now, with this new technology, poses new challenges, but I think we need to sort of bring forth what we know how to do to reduce reckless behavior in crossing the street, you know, and driving and motorcycling. Now we got to bring it to this new technology called e-bikes. So I, I suggest that we approach it in a more holistic way and not just a, a one-size regulate or not regulate only.
Thank you. Councilmember Bloomberg?
Thank you. First of all, I'd like to thank everybody who came to speak about this tonight. You were all very articulate. I, I thought everybody's conversation on all sides of this was informative and balanced. My feeling about what we're being asked to do tonight, which is to prohibit the use of any motor-assisted vehicle on two trails, which is what is currently in place, I'm going to support that. And I understand, Mr. Wellock, your careful distinction between a true e-bike and other kinds of motorized, more high-powered vehicles, to be more specific about it. The issue of enforcement within the trail becomes much more difficult. I understand that if we continue to prohibit the use of all power motor-assisted vehicles, including e-bikes, motorcycles, mopeds, and everything in between, that legitimate users, for instance, of e-bikes are not going to be able to use the Green Bay Trail or the McClory Trail. I understand that. I understand that may feel unfair, but in the balance of trying to reach a safe solution, you can still use e-bikes legally on city streets and in areas where cyclists also in large numbers commute and cycle for exercise and all their kinds of things. But these two trails remain really the last place in our community that are free of motor-assisted vehicles, and I'd like to keep them that way. They, they're the last place where recreational pedestrians and recreational cyclists can use, although there is some impediment of that because we, we do see pretty fast cyclists going through there on occasion. But to add any kind of motor-assisted vehicle, whether it's an e-bike or something more powerful, is very difficult to enforce within those confined areas. By prohibiting that and allowing the legal use of e-bikes by adults and those of age to use them on city streets, enforcement becomes easier for the police department, less questionable, and more consistent. So I, I understand what I'm proposing is somewhat unfair to e-cyclists, but that's the reasoning behind where I come down.
Thank you. Councilmember Center?
I just want to, Mayor, if I can, just for a moment, if I can clarify, and I know, I think the council knows this, but this, obviously, is a, a well-rounded discussion about e-bikes in general. As I alluded to and then said a few times, the ordinance before you tonight only addresses whether or not e-bikes would be permitted on trails, all trails within the city. The ordinance that you adopted in June prohibits e-bikes on all trails. So if there's a desire for the, the council has a desire to change up other of the rules adopted in June, that's not before you tonight. We can certainly, working with the manager's office, schedule that for further discussion or, or with direction, prepare an additional ordinance. But, you know, more pointedly, the, the ordinance before you is just about whether or not to relax the restriction of e-bikes on trails.
I think that's what my. I think that's what my comments would draw.
Right. It literally is, is not to be deemed or interpreted as prohibiting the operation on publicly-owned bicycle paths.
That wasn't directed, yeah. That wasn't directed at councilmember Bloomberg. We've had a broader discussion also.
Specifically.
Correct. Thank you, Mayor.
And it's publicly-owned trails, not private trails.
Correct.
Yep. Okay. Councilmember Center?
Thank you. Yeah, I tried to take a lot of notes here, because there's a lot to unpack, right, and a lot of nuance. I appreciate this, Mr. Laxner, who I think walked out for coming and providing their commentary, you know, and Mr. Wellack, for pointing out and trying to articulate the difference in the type of bikes that exist. It's a lot of what I tried to kind of socialize and also have a discussion on during the committee the whole last July, or during the July meeting, I should say. I just feel there's a lot lost in translation in this whole topic. You know, councilmember Tapia added that people use the vehicle types interchangeably as they're talking about it, right? We're talking about e-bikes, e-motocycles. Like, there's a lot of, like, which actual vehicles are we speaking of, right? The pedal-assist bikes that have a little battery that enable individuals to go longer and farther are very different than the e-motocycles that we're seeing kids ride with extreme negligence, right? Up and down the sidewalks and on the streets. I don't think we have an e-bike issue, we have a motorcycle problem, and we have an irresponsible child problem. Why are we penalizing law-abiding citizens who want to ride their bikes in a safe way and enjoy the trails because there's some bad apples? Let's focus on the enforcement, let's focus on education, let's put up some signage, just like we do for other laws that we pass. People drive poorly. We put up speed limit signs. We educate them, we tell them to put their phone down when they're driving. They still do it, but sometimes they're going to get a ticket. That's all we can do. Yes, the Green Bay Trail and other trails are a sanctuary for people to enjoy a nice walk, and be with their kids, and have their dog. It's also a sanctuary for people who want to ride their e-bikes. Not their motorcycles, but their e-bikes. That's effectively what I have to say. I think I covered all my notes. But I continue to feel strongly around allowing our residents to enjoy their bicycles. I don't think it's good lawmaking to restrict our residents. I think we're projecting our individual experiences to say that it's better for residents what we're proposing here. I think it's not better for a lot of the residents. And for that reason, I continue to support the element of this legislation that permits the use of e-bikes on trails. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Bruckman?
Thank you. Thank you. As I was looking this over and thinking about it, I thought about my seven-year-old son riding his bike yesterday with a couple of his friends, and they just learned how to ride a bike going on Green Bay Trail after they were at the Brayside Market. And I just think about it, and I think I just cannot, at this point, permit these e-bikes, any type motorcycles, e-bikes, on the trail, just for safety, that's their safe haven to be on as a parent, that's, you know, where I'm standing. I also believe we need more data, and enforcement hasn't had enough time to really look at the numbers. And then, once we get that, we'll see where we're at in the fall, and we could readdress it. But at this point, I'm comfortable saying that I do not feel comfortable with the e-bikes on the Green Bay Trails.
Thank you.
Or any trails. Thank you.
Councilmember Ross, and then Tapia?
I wanted to hear all of my colleagues speak about this, because I honestly don't feel very knowledgeable enough. I don't have enough knowledge of e-bikes, I've never honestly ridden one. And I think I have to, whereas I was open to the idea of, I'll be honest, to allowing it, I'd heard, we've received a lot of emails in favor of e-bikes on the trails. I know people with injuries who use e-bikes on the trails and to commute to their work. But I am concerned that this is a problem that we really don't have a good handle on, nobody does. I mean, in terms of, we talk about, you know, education, but we see kids just, you know, flouting police, flouting Park District employees that stop them. I might have spoken to the same one you did, I'm not sure, at the bottom of Park Avenue, at the Park Avenue Beach. And so, I guess, for the time being, anyway, I think my hope would be that perhaps we can, you know, give it to the end of summer, and then keep the ban in place, and then revisit it. But I feel like this is a problem that no community, let alone Highland Park, I mean, all of our neighboring communities are dealing with this as well. And I'm not even sure that enforcement is really, you know, going to do, well, first of all, I would like to see enforcement, police, you know, issuing tickets. And education, I'm less confident about, because I just feel like the younger people, you know, 13 to 16, well, first of all, 13 aren't supposed to be riding it, but the younger folks that do have their driver's license even, aren't necessarily inclined to follow the rules, or, I just think it's a safer way to go at this point with this being such a difficulty issue that many municipalities, cities are struggling with, that it's better to keep the ban in place, at least. I don't know if council would be open to reconsidering it again, but for the time being, I feel like I have to leave it in place.
Well, it is in place, but for the question tonight, which is on the Green Bay?
On the Green Bay Trail. That's, I should have been more specific, to leave that in place. I'm concerned about safety, and we talked earlier this evening about safety being a paramount concern of city council. There are too many problems, yeah.
Thank you. Councilmember Tapia, and then I'll take us home.
Yeah, and actually, I don't know how to exactly frame this, but I kind of want to propose an amendment and vote on it, even though I might likely lose. But I kind of want to put it on the table as part of trying to thread the needle a little bit. So what I'm getting at here is, you know, I'm not in support of the more motorcycle-type bicycles in Green Bay. So I would like to propose some language that would allow the narrow definition of e-bikes on the trail, and exclude and prohibit the use of those other type of motorized bikes, so that we can narrow down the issue, you know? Because right now, we're conflating two different things. And then, so I'd like to propose an amendment, have a vote on it, and then see what happens, and then go back to the original if it fails.
So we have two more people who want to make comments, at least.
Okay.
And then you can make a motion with your proposed amendment. Okay?
Help me with the language.
The only thing I was going to add, having said what I said previously, I would be willing to reconsider this at the end of the summer. I agree that we have not had an opportunity to see how things have gone through an entire season.
Thank you. Councilmember Liddour?
I have no problem with going, reconsidering this, not really at the end of the summer, but in early fall or whatever, when the season is over.
Right.
Unless you found out that the state was going to consider something, and that would be a different timeframe.
That would be in October.
I just think, and feel free to propose an amendment, I don't like making lawmaking where I don't know the facts. I don't know the distinctions between a scooter, an E1, an E2, and E3. I don't know the capacity in terms of mileage, speed. I don't know any of those things. And I don't feel that we are prepared as a body and researched well enough that we could actually vote on something like that tonight. So I could have just voted no, but rather than doing that, I feel, I should say to you, we have a motion on the floor. It's pretty clear, and I think that we should just take that at face value, and perhaps reconsider this in the future.
So we do now have a motion on the floor?
We don't.
Nope. I just want to share that we sent Highland Park's ordinance to the speaker's office to consider, but Corporation Council also sent sort of the background data for the other municipalities that have these similar laws that have now just been adopted this summer. We are the only one that has the trail prohibition in our law. Everybody else allows these, as I understand it, on the Green Bay Trail. Maybe you don't have those clients, or...
Well, yeah, I don't know off the top of my head, for the village of Blenco, admittedly is a client of our firms, I don't know personally what they have.
I know from speaking with Steve Elrod, we are the only ones, and with Chief Jagman, we are the only ones.
I believe both of them, so, and I believe you too, Mayor.
Thank you. Thank you. So I did want to, I did want to share that. Any comments from the public that we haven't heard yet? Yes, Peter, please come forward.
You've heard from me, but I don't think I used my entire three minutes, so.
Go for it. All right.
I just wanted to point out, if I'm not mistaken, the amendment that we're talking about tonight would not only allow e-bikes on the trail, but it would allow e-bikes to be ridden by people that are under 16 without a license.
No.
On the trail.
If they're with a parent.
Is that right?
If they're with a parent.
I just want to bring that up, is that correct?
Yeah, no, it's not unfettered use on the trail, no other rules apply. All the rules continue to apply, it just also is removing the prohibition from the Green Bay Trail. But every other aspect of the law remains intact.
I just wanted to check that.
I understand where the confusion is, though, right? Because if you do, if the ordinance...
I think it's because of the jurisdiction issue, of not being able to potentially even restrict the trail, which includes the Skokie Valley.
Well, on the Skokie, we can't do any prohibition. But McClory, Green Bay Trail, the entire ban prohibition rules are continuing.
If you say so. Just the way I read it, when I read it a few hours ago, it looked like all these rules that we've passed would not be applicable with this new amendment, would not be applicable with this amendment. Just, it's something we should look at.
Yeah. All right. So it's got all the general provisions, location restrictions, that's the only piece. So its location restrictions is Sub C, Sub 3, not deemed or interpreted by prohibiting the operation of electric bicycles on publicly-owned bicycle paths or trails. But everything else before that is still intact. And if not, then I'm going to say to Corporation Council, that's the intention of this council, to maintain every other restriction.
So I can speak to that, Mayor.
Okay.
As it relates to those under the age of 16, the current ordinance, the ordinance that was approved in June prohibits anyone under the age of 16, or anyone who does not possess a driver's license, but we're talking about under 16, to operate a motor-driven vehicle, I want to come back to that term in a moment.
Which is defined.
Which is defined, on any public street, sidewalk, lot, bicycle path, or other public property within the city.
Right.
Any of them. The amendment before you this evening removes bicycle path from that prohibition, which means if this ordinance is adopted in its current form, someone under 16 would then be allowed to ride a motor-driven vehicle on bicycle paths.
Oh, well, I appreciate you raising that. That's not our intention. My understanding is, we want it to be the same, age-wise and so forth, regardless of location.
I agree.
So it needs to be drafted in a way that...
So I'm not, okay.
...catches that. Thank you, Mr. Sreda.
I'm sorry, Mayor, I want to get clarification on this, because what, right now, today, someone under 16 cannot ride a motor, unless accompanied by the guardian, I should say. There's the exception for being with your parent or guardian.
Right, but if they're not with a guardian.
Someone under 16 cannot ride a motor-driven vehicle anywhere on public property, let's say.
Okay. That's our intention.
That's your intention. So you do not want that changed? So someone under 16 could still not ride on one of these trails?
Correct.
Okay, that could be easily fixed. That could be easily fixed.
Okay.
Kept as is, effectively.
What?
Kept as is.
Well, no, no, to have that, so it is specifically including no 16-year, no people under 16 riding these things anywhere, basically.
Right.
Okay, so thank you for raising that.
Yeah. And I want to address, I know we haven't gotten to the motion yet, but I want to address the notion that councilmember Tapia raised about distinguishing, I think, if I understood correctly, distinguishing between what we are in this room, this is considered to be an e-bike, something that's lower speed, and the faster devices that we've heard about this evening as well. I want to note, in our current ordinance, and these definitions are not changed in the amendment that's before you tonight, we define a low-speed electric bicycle, in a nutshell, as anything that's defined that way, either as Class 1, 2, or 3 in the State Vehicle Code. In the State Vehicle Code, there are three classes, the fastest of which, well, actually, they don't have maximum speeds. They have different definitions. The classes depend on when the assistance kicks in, depending on what the speed is. So even under state law, something that's called a low-speed electric bicycle is not necessarily, does not necessarily have a speed maximum. Class 3, for example, is a low-speed bicycle equipped with a motor that provides assistance only when the rider is pedaling, and ceases to provide assistance when the bicycle reaches a speed of 28 miles per hour. I suppose it would be hard for someone on their own to pedal at that speed, but what do I know? So maybe it's a functional maximum of 28? I don't know enough about the bicycles to know that. A device that goes over 28 miles per hour, that is capable of having electric assistance or motor assistance beyond 20 miles an hour, would be outside all of the state's definitions. The last point I want to add, the term "motor-driven vehicle" in our ordinance covers all vehicles, including but not limited to low-speed electric bicycles, for which you don't receive a license or don't need a license from the state. So our code right now, right now prohibits all of those motor-driven vehicles of any speed on all these properties. If I understood councilmember Tapia's suggestion correctly, he wanted to permit what was called low-speed bicycles, so let's save for argument, say, up to 28 miles per hour, but prohibit other motor-driven vehicles on the trail.
Yes.
Okay, I understand that. I know it's going to be more discussion. I know it's going to be more discussion, but...
But it's not 20, that's not the point. It's not about, it's not about how fast they can go.
Well, it is when you're on the trail.
No, you're, again, you're assuming that somebody is going to be able to pedal that fast, and is going to, I'm going to let Mr. Wellack, I think, who understands these actual bikes and can explain...
As the one running this meeting, I'm good to go. Thank you.
Sorry, Mayor.
Mr. Wellack, usually we allow people to have three minutes to comment, so.
I've got my partner Casey, who runs the bike store. From a clarification standpoint, you'll find very few cyclists on any type of bike riding 28 miles an hour, okay? Just to clarify. I ride in groups with very good cyclists, we ride on very light bikes, we're not riding at 28 miles an hour, except going downhill with the wind behind us in a group, okay? Just to clarify. So these bikes stop providing the assistance. I also just want to just clarify, what I am really concerned about as a citizen is the kids on the streets. I am not as concerned on the Green Bay Trail, if we're talking between Lake Cook Road and whatever, downtown, okay? What I'm concerned about are the people that are on the streets, riding in these packs, and they're riding what I consider motorized vehicles that are not, that should have license plates, that should have lights, that should have turn signals, and none of them do. I almost ran into somebody today on a side street, and this was an adult riding one of these things. And Casey can clarify a little bit on the bicycles.
So on the bicycle side, you're partly right, but there's a, do you want me to introduce myself, too?
State your name for the record, thank you.
Casey Swick, one of the owners of the Trek Star. So clarifications on the classes, so, and if you look at, like, New York City, for example, they have outlined everything except for a Class 1 e-bike. That is a pedal-assist-only, that goes 20 miles an hour max. Class 2 will generally introduce a throttle, where there is no pedaling. That is just like, sort of, an e-motorcycle, and then you'll have the 28 delineation, which is generally a Class 3, and that can be throttle or pedal-assist generally. So I know all municipalities around the area are doing things like this, but I think the difference here is that we're banning people, again, with disabilities, that are using this as forms of exercise, they're riding farther, they're trying to keep up with other people, rather than addressing the problem. And again, in all these municipalities, it's generally been, if you're not 16, if you don't know the rules of the road, if you don't know how to... don't know the rules of the road, if you don't know how to handle a vehicle, then you shouldn't be on one of these either. And so I think we're penalizing a lot of residents, a lot of people who are using this to get off the couch, to start a journey that may end up being a bicycle without a motor. But the penalization of those people on these beautiful trails that we have is, I feel, where you guys are at at this point. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Rubin, would you like to say something?
Hello, everybody. My name is Rob Rubin, 366 Dorf Deer Park. Thank you for reconsidering this issue very quickly since it was adopted. I just want to make a couple of general comments. First of all, I appreciate all this technical talk about Class 1, Class 2, Class 3, lack of standardization. I want to give you a slightly different perspective. I tore my Achilles many years ago, so when I'm in a grocery store, I'm always sensitive to carts hitting me from the back. Carts aren't going 5 miles per hour, they're not going 10, they're not full weight, and they're not as heavy as a bicycle. If anybody's ever been hit in the back, in the heel, or in the knee by a grocery cart, you know the impact, okay? We're talking about orders of magnitude greater force, number one. Number two, on the trail, on the trail where there's no out, you can't hear somebody coming, getting hit from the rear could be a disaster, okay? Forget all the great issues everybody brought up about dogs and this and that. If you have somebody coming from the rear, like happened with Councilmember Littlewar, you're going to be crippled. If it's the intention of this group to wait for the first crippling injury, keep going the way you're going, because that's, I believe, that's going to happen at some point. I'm talking about the bike trail, not talking about the streets, okay? I think any motorized vehicle on there is really dangerous, okay? If you want to try to split the right allocation, maybe put two hours, three days a week, when people could take e-bikes out there. That way they get to do that, they get their exercise. Don't co-mingle pedestrians with e-bikes. Really dangerous, for what it's worth.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions from the council? Just want to stay all evening, okay? All right, so, did you want to make a motion and have your amendment and talk about people under 16 and...
Yeah, I'd like to, you helped me with the language here, but I want to make an amendment where we would only allow whatever definition of the Class 1 bikes are, and I don't know if there's an actual technical thing that we can clamp onto, but that I would want to allow that and prohibit all other types of motorized vehicles on the trails.
That's your motion?
That is my motion.
And before you go further, was there also the desire to prohibit, prohibit under 16 no matter what?
Yeah, I mean, yeah, everything else stays the same.
Everything else stays the same, so nobody...
So just Class 1.
Class 1 by 16 and no...
About Class 1 on the Green Bay Trail.
Which is no throttle, right?
No throttle.
But Mayor, if I just could, before the motion is just finished, just from an enforcement perspective...
How do you, what's a Class 1?
To have an officer try to identify, is that a Class 1 or a Class 2, is going to be extremely challenging.
Well, you know how, you know, cell phones are prohibited, but police can't catch up most of the time? But then if you're in an accident, or you run a red light, and the police comes over and says, oh, you're on your phone, too, then bam, you know, you get the double ticket there. This would be comparable, and doesn't address the safety issue necessarily, but in terms of enforcement, you know, when there's reckless riding, then you stop the bike and you see that it has a throttle on it, then you enforce what was hard to enforce, but now you have a, you see it. That's true with a lot of things having to do with cars, that, you know...
Well, it is. I guess I just want to just make it clear for the council. I mean, that's almost like saying enforce iPhones but not Androids, you know? It's extremely difficult. Or unless you're saying, only if an incident happens, and then now we're responding to an injury, would you give a citation to someone? I just want to outline just the challenge with that from a, from an enforcement perspective.
So let's talk about how, and I think Councilmember Center mentioned this, you know, education is a critical part of this, as well as enforcement, but getting the word out through the schools, to the parents, to everybody, you know, this is our expectation. I don't know what the state's going to do, if anything, in October. It's the middle of August right now, that's probably two months away, but if people want to pursue Item 23, you've made a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
So we have a motion, we have a second. We could keep talking about this, or we could take a vote.
Let's take a vote.
Will the clerk call a vote? And so, I'm so sorry, let's be really clear what we're voting on, just to make sure. So you're saying only Class 1?
Only Class 1 allowed on the trails.
On Green Bay Trail.
And everything else...
And nobody under 16 is allowed to be on any of these things?
Yeah.
Is that clear enough for drafting purposes?
It is, yes.
Okay, that's what we're voting on. Councilmember Center?
Aye.
Councilmember Bruckman?
Nay.
Councilmember Ross?
Nay.
Councilmember Tapia?
Aye.
Councilmember Littlewar?
No.
Councilmember Bloomberg?
No.
Mayor Roderick? Aye. That's four nays, three ayes, and the motion fails, or it is denied, or whatever. It's not happening. Whatever we're doing, it's not happening.
I have a motion to reconsider an amendment to this part of the code to be placed on the first meeting of October.
Essentially, it's a motion to continue this matter to the...
A motion to continue this matter to the first meeting of October.
Second. And you want to be sure that we have data from our staff that gives us better understanding of what the experience has been to date?
Yes.
And I'm counting on the Saritas to come back, because I'm sure there will be more for you to recount. Okay, so we have a motion, we have a second. Will the clerk call the vote? Councilmember Center?
Aye.
Councilmember Bruckman?
Aye.
Councilmember Ross?
Aye.
Councilmember Tapia?
Aye.
Councilmember Littlewar?
Aye.
Councilmember Bloomberg?
Aye.
Mayor Roderick? Aye. Seven ayes, no nays, we will see you the first meeting of October. With that, I'm seeking a motion to adjourn. I'll favor say aye.
Aye.
Thanks, everyone.